Okay, good evening, everyone. This webinar is Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting of Monday, May 11, 2020. The time is now 6:30 PM. And with us this evening as our panelists for tonight's meeting are the following members. Anne Chakello, Vice Chair, Board of Finance. Anne Santoro, Board of Finance Member. Richard Steele, Board of Finance Member. Peter DeRosa, Board of Finance Member. John Birmingham, Board of Finance Member. And myself, Camille Alberti, Chair of the Board. We have also Mark Nickerson this evening for Selectmen. And Anna Johnson, our Finance Director. As well as Karen Zemetrick, our Recording Secretary. We have a number of departments that we will be hearing presentations on this evening. As each presenter presents their budget, I would ask that you would just state your name and your title or position within the town. For anybody that is listening to this meeting, I would like you to know that this is an informational/educational session. No decisions regarding the budget will be made this evening. That will begin on Wednesday of this week, May 13. That's when deliberations begin. We may need to schedule an extra meeting on May 14 if we don't finish on the 13th. We will take a short break around 8:30 this evening. We'll try to hold that to 10 minutes and then come back and regroup. So with that, I'd like to jump right into the budget presentations and we'll begin with the Assessors Department, Number 102. I believe Diane might be presenting that this evening.
Diane, yes?
Good evening, everyone. This is Diane Vitagliano, Assessor for the Town of Eastlime. And I would like to present my budget again. I'm very proud of my budget. I think that I try very hard to find ways to always trim the budget down. This year, we generally have $5,000 set aside for personal property audits. It's in the service contract account. And we do usually use those for personal property audits, which have been quite successful in the past. In asking to trim things, I felt that right now that the businesses in the town of Eastlime are just suffering so. The small businesses, I really hate to see it. And I would not want to put any undue stress and further inhibit their success by conducting any personal property audits in this next fiscal year. So I have eliminated that $5,000 from my budget. Also, with Vision Government Solutions, Vision Government Solutions is our CAMA system, which produces our field cards. It's where we keep track of and build our evaluations. A couple of years ago, I was able to drop down an entire user group, which saved about $1,500 at that time. I think even a little bit more. And when I looked at their costs this year, if I were still in that category, it would have been an additional $1,893. So I was able to continue to save that out of our budget by dropping one computer access to that program. Those are the CAMA system, which is Vision Government Solutions. And our administrative program, WASH. And those are both costs that we incur every year that help us produce our field cards and get ready the tax file, the file that goes over to the tax collector for billing. So those are costs that occur every year. The additional line item in that category is tie-in bond. And that's to produce our GIS system or the assessor's maps online. And I was able to, over the last couple of years, I've been able to trim that down by reducing the number, first by reducing all the Mylar maps. And second, by reducing an entire set of maps. Because now we do things more digitally. And so they are able to provide me a digital copy. And if need be, the additional large maps can be produced in-house if anybody needs them. So those are kind of the highlights of my budget. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment to the board. I think the $5,000 that is in our budget book is what Diane is referring to when it comes to contracted operating services. I believe Diane probably recommended to the Board of Selectmen that that $5,000 could be reduced this year, eliminated by not putting the burden on. And that would be reflected in the Board of Selectmen recommended reductions. So... Does anybody have any questions for Diane?
I have one.
I'm trying to compare the different budgets. What's the overall net? Is there an increase, a decrease between last year's and this year's with the $5,000?
I believe it's a decrease.
Okay. Okay. Good job.
Thank you. John Birmingham.
Can you hear me? Hello?
No, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
I hear when you say I have a question, but after that...
No, my question was, on revenue, is that $900 going to be realized?
Oh, the $900, it's hard to say. I mean, we're not a big revenue-producing in that regard, office. It's just copies of field cards. So that might be reduced some. That's not actually reflected in my budget.
Okay.
So maybe Anna Johnson? Anna? Anna, John Birmingham asked if the $900 revenue notation on the assessor's office budget, is that reflected in the revenue sheet, the latest revenue sheet that we have?
Yes, it is. And this year to date...
Okay, so it is reflected?
Yes.
Which may or may not be realized?
I would imagine that...
Was the answer.
So the question...
I would imagine it would be reduced.
So the revenue would have...
Would you be able to...
Camille, we couldn't hear you.
We had a call. I know, there was a call-in user. I just had to mute. Well, it's only $900. So I suppose when we get to a discussion of revenue on Wednesday, we can discuss whether that should be reduced or not on the revenue side.
So fiscal year to date...
If that makes sense?
For fiscal year to date, we've received $570. And we still have the rest of this month and next month. But being that we're closed, we're probably going to be a little below that this year.
Okay. And perhaps a little bit lower than the 900 that's reflected here for next year. Right? Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on the assessor's budget? Yes, Steele?
Yes.
Rich, yes?
Thank you for your presentation. Yeah, thanks for your presentation. And I was just wondering, with the professional conventions and conferences, do you feel as though there may be any room to reduce that at all this year?
No, I don't. I have a clerk that is trying to get certified. And she's really going to need to get classes done in order to be able to take her test. You know, that's already a very valued area. As we need to keep up, two of us are certified and with the third trying to get certified, that's three of us sharing that education budget. I have tried really hard to reduce that budget. One of the things that I did was I actually got certified as an instructor, which allows me to go to UConn and stay up at Assessor School at UConn. It enables me to stay up there for free and to pick up continuing education credits that the town doesn't have to pay for. And the reason I went through that very lengthy process was because that area of my budget was, I felt so important in my job and being able to bring in money to the town and keep up with all of the changing legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Diane on this department?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. Diane, thanks for all the cost-saving measures. I've noticed that through the last few years. So that's really great. Just a quick question on transportation. So the transportation, I think it was $450? So these dollars, would they be directed for your out-of-town meetings? That, my question is, may or may not happen. I mean, I have this issue looking through the budget with the transportation, because so many professional meetings will be canceled or may be held virtually. So how is that $450 spent, I guess would be my question?
Yes, it is mainly for out-of-town meetings and out-of-town education that we do have to go to. And I guess there is a possibility that that may be able to be reduced for the future. I was really hoping that we would get back to more normal circumstances. You know, I know they're talking about still having Assessor School, although not done altogether and not at UConn, but it's scheduled for August 10 through the 14th. So they're still planning on having some things happen. You know, it's kind of an unknown.
Sure. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions on Department 102? Okay. Seeing no questions, if it pleases the board, I would like... Who is that?
I just want to point out that we have professional training throughout all the budgets. And transportation is linked to that. And we're on the assumption that our workers that require certification and education will be required to still go to those events. Obviously, if those are canceled later, then we would return that back to the town. But we are building our budget based on the fact that we have professionals that are in very specific categories that will need to be certified, trained, and go through continuing education.
Yeah, just...
Okay, thank you.
If I could, hang on. If I could, yeah. Thanks for that, Mark. I understand that in the budget. I just, am I on here? Yeah. Thanks for that. I do think that, you know, sometimes it's quite clear in the budgets where that transportation figure is. And other times with professional development fees or certifications, it's not always clear. So there's definitely two components to it. You know, you need your yearly certifications, your continuing education. But there's also this other component of the travel, which may or may not come to pass. So that was my only point. Thanks.
Okay. So Diane will also be addressing this for this evening with the Board of Assessment Appeals, which is Department 127. It's located about halfway down our agenda this evening. If it pleases the board, I'd like to move that up into the second position so that Diane can address that at the same time. Is that okay with everyone? Sure. Just say yes or no. And Rich? Peter, John?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Great, thank you. Okay. So Diane, if you could just a quick run-through of Department 127.
Okay, so you will notice, albeit small, there is an increase in this budget. The reason that there is an increase in this budget is because in the past, the members of the Board of Assessment Appeal have not taken any kind of money for their services. And I believe it was actually pointed out by one of the Board of Finance members last year that they were questioning whether they actually are supposed to be doing that. So I just increased their amount in case they should want to seek that pay.
Diane, was that a Board of Finance member or was that the first Selectman that mentioned that? Do you recall?
No, I think it was one of the Board of Finance members who had just mentioned in talking about, it wasn't directed for the Board of Assessment Appeals, but they had put that question out there. Geez, you know, as Board of Finance members, I think you're required to take that. And so that question was kind of thrown, just kind of thrown out there. And I thought, geez, next year's budget, I better put in some money in case they all decide to ask for it. If it's not in the budget, there wouldn't be any money, any funds to be able to pay them should they request it. So I increased it some. It's not a revaluation year. So next year, I would anticipate that it would be increased even more. It's a small amount, but I think those funds do need to be available should they request to get paid for their service.
Excuse me, which department?
So I don't recall.
I lost my...
Rich, this is Department 127, Board of Assessment Appeals. Very small.
Okay.
Very small budget.
Yeah, I think the budget is like $19... Yeah.
It is, $1,900. It's a state statute.
So it's a small amount? It is a small amount. I didn't see anything in our... I did review the town charter and I didn't see anything in there specifically relating to compensation for Board of Assessment Appeals. And I didn't find anything in the state charter either.
It is a state statute.
Right. Maybe, Mark, you could just email me the statute so that I could just go verify that? Because I couldn't find one. And I know it's not in our town charter. I did review that. But if that were to change, Diane, are you saying that you moved in the stipends for the Board of Assessment Appeal Commission members into that part-time clerical recording secretary line item? Where are those dollars?
Yes, that's the only account that there is. That's, in the past, I think that there was one board member who, in my time, there was one board member who we requested to be paid. And I believe it came out of that account. And so that's why I put it there.
Well, Anna, if we were to move forward with this, we should probably have a separate account. We don't want to roll those dollars into the recording secretary account. So can we create a new one for that and break out the dollars?
So, Anna? Yeah, so if you want to leave the funds in and you want it to be two different line items, we would have to, when you finalize the budget, that would need to be specified. And we could carve it out and have...
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Diane regarding Board of Assessment Appeals, Department 127? Okay. Any other questions for Diane? All right, seeing none, I guess we can move on. Thank you, Diane, for answering those questions. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So next up on the list is Department 103, Tax Collector. Is Mr. McCullough on this call? I don't see that Mr. McCullough is on this call. So who will be speaking on his behalf? Mark?
Can you hear me now? This is John. Can you hear me?
Oh, are you the caller?
John.
Yeah, okay, John.
Yes, I am.
Did you call in on a phone? Okay. Let me...
Yes, I did.
Okay. You're not identified, you're just identified as a call-in user, so I didn't know who that was. Hang on just one second. Bear with me. And excuse my typos if I spell your name wrong. There we go.
It happened.
Okay, John. You're on.
Okay.
Department 103, you're on, John.
Yes. Did you want to go down line by line on...
Would you like to walk us through...
No, John, in just a...
What does the board...
Just want to point out some... Okay. I'm sure that you've noticed regarding the tax bill printing, 251, a dramatic increase for 5215.
Right. Why is it important to do our tax bills outside? Yes, let's talk about why that's important, John.
Of course. Primarily, it would be a great time saver, not only for the tax office, but it would give the taxpayers an additional week or two in order to get their house in order to pay their taxes. And many of them might even pay before July 1st. When we look at the numbers, when we broke down all the components, the actual cost of in-house, and I added it next to the week because it usually takes two weeks to do the whole process, the printing, the collating, folding, et cetera. I came up with the $10,825, that includes the cost of mailing. When we outsource, the cost is $8,937. The in-house cost includes the wages for the staff over the two weeks.
So John McCullough, the tax collector, is talking about the one line item that has a nearly 200% increase. And he just explained why. He felt that was necessary this year. Does anybody have any questions for him or need additional explanation on that? Okay, I'll have a question then. John, you said that this would save the town a considerable amount of money if we were to outsource this, but where are those savings? Where are those savings recorded? I see that the entire budget is up 5%. And I didn't see any light items that were reduced as a result of that time-saving initiative.
Well, we did eliminate the collection cost. That was previous year's $600. Produced that to zero. That was a service we used that we found wasn't very effective. And also, they had a dramatic increase in their cost to us. So I eliminated that.
Okay, so we are...
Everything else is...
So we are spending about 30, we're spending over $3,000 to save 600?
No, actually, it was more of a time-saving technique. I guess you could call, but we have outsourced before and it's been very effective as far as giving us time to get ready and getting the bills to the people with the proper amount of preparation.
I have a question regarding that. Is on the Board of Selectmen recommended reductions, it looks like that increase was eliminated? So I'm confused.
Was it...
It's still a proposal. I was just wondering.
So Peter?
Yeah.
Peter, let me just say that the first Selectman has made it clear that the list that we received of reductions are recommended reductions
Right, right.
For us to consider.
Right. And I just wanted to point that that was one of the things recommended of being...
So I'm not sure that... So I'm not sure that Mr. McCullough agrees with that or not is the only point I want to make. So that's why we're working off of the original adopted budget from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Yes, I didn't have the opportunity to respond to the Board of Selectmen's decision.
Okay. So you're still recommending it, John, correct?
I am.
Okay. Okay.
Again, I just want to point out that the cost...
Okay. Any other questions for John McCullough on his budget?
There's a huge efficiency issue with doing it in-house. Literally, you know, all hands on deck, people stuffing envelopes. There's a vast amount of human error that goes out where people aren't getting their bills, because you may have double stuffed one envelope, but one envelope didn't go out. There's a color code system using the mail, using the outside printer where you can color code the vehicles versus commercial versus residential. And also, the bills get out quick, where it takes us two, two and a half weeks to get the bills out from just people stuffing envelopes, printing, stuffing, putting them through the postage machine, literally what they used to do in the 1950s, to sending it to a print shop and they send it out within a matter of hours once they get to work on our job. And that helps us in our collection efforts. We struggle with this. We struggle with this quite a bit. At one point on our capital plan, we had a purchase proposed to buy a mail system, to buy the mail system so we could send all this stuff through. And there are machines that will do all this. But we use people and there's a huge inefficiency with that. We struggle with this every year. And John has suggested we, once again, go to the system. And while the Board of Selectmen went back and forth, we don't think it's a significant difference. There's only a couple thousand dollar difference to send this out to a shop and do it right the first time. Another reason for the savings, the built-in savings, is we got to pay 55 cents an envelope because they're sending it out pre-sourced. and the, because they're sending it out pre-sorted. I think it's 44 cents an envelope, so there's a built-in savings there as well. That's how that all happens. I, maybe that just gives a little bit more clarity. John, John's having difficulty on the phone tonight getting the information out and hearing your questions. Maybe that helps.
Thank you.
If I could just add something, I do, if I could just add something, I do get complaints from people who receive their bills, like last year, I believe they received them on the 29th of June. And they look at the bill and it says due July 1st. Especially the older people kind of agitated, I guess, when, you know, I think they only have a couple days to, to respond.
Well, actually, they have 30 days to get the payment in without interest penalty. Be clear, correct?
Due date is July 1st.
I know, but some of them don't look.
Yeah. But that is a customer service issue, that is correct.
Okay. Anything else that you would like to add, Mark or John, about this budget? If not, are there any other questions from the board regarding this?
I do, I have one, Camille. I have a question. This is in regards, again, to transportation. And I see in account 246, John, that there's $1,000 to cover those, the transportation for the CCM classes. So here's another example of, you know, a transportation cost that is actually, and thanks for doing this, at least you have made it clear that it's transportation, not the cost to attend a particular, you know, meeting, et cetera, et cetera. So it seems like it's for the tax aid and not for anyone else in the office, but just this one. Okay, so, um, yeah, I think CCM's doing a lot of classes by webinar, so. Yeah, so do you have any thoughts on it? I mean, I have my crystal ball here, I'm just pointing it out, you know? So, so that is something that possibly in your.
It would make sense to have.
Right. Yeah, okay, well, that's good. I mean, I think, I think we kind of, kind of. Yeah. I mean, I think the availability of the course will be there for sure. They've been very good about their courses, you know, I kind of, I kind of keep up with, with their list, but, but the transportation's an issue, but thanks. That's all I have right now, thanks.
Gas anymore, it's just, we went through it. All right.
Camille, if I may?
Okay. Yes, of course, Anna.
I just want to make a point of, point of caution. The classes that the Tax Collector is referring to in his budget are not CCM classes. They're Connecticut Certified Municipal Collector classes. These are classes that the staff in the office takes to get certified to be tax collectors within the state. So I just kind of, I just point that out.
Thank you. Connecticut Certified Municipal Collector.
CCMs. Right.
It's a different CCM, John.
Okay, got it.
Right.
Got it.
John, I do have a question, just over at it. John, where are, where are those classes held at?
Yeah. They usually hold them in Berlin, but the last one that Jessica went, was a town in the northwest part of the state. So we went through the entire budget just in her first, her first class.
Oh, my God.
Because of the mileage, the mileage was so high.
Okay, well, thanks for pointing that out, thanks, Anna, because those are different locations. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for? Yes, Anne?
Yes.
Yes, Anne.
My question is, now, the taxes this year, the taxes this year are going to be delayed if people can't pay due to the COVID till October 1st. So can you just address that? Because you're going to have more time, I'm assuming, to, to, you know, stuff the envelopes and such.
So, well, remember that the bills are still due on July 1st and those that apply can get an extension.
Yes, that's.
But we anticipate most of our receipts
Right.
will come in on time. So we're still going to get the bills out due July 1st. There are some that will apply for an extension, an extra 60-day extension.
When does it? And when do they have to have the extension in by?
July 1st.
When do they have to have the extension in by?
By executive order, July 1st.
Got it, thank you.
I'm, I'm just going to make a quick comment here. I think, I think we're having some difficulties this evening with all the connections. So as each department head finishes their presentation, I'm going to move them to the attendee panel instead of the panelist panel. So maybe that'll help dream things a little. No, we, they are more than welcome, we have, we have up to 100.
Or go watch Jeopardy. I have a really bad connection, I don't know what's going on.
I, I do as well.
I'm terrible.
But there's a lot of delay, like a ton of delay and a lot of screen freezing as well.
We do have 23 participants on. Okay, if nobody else has any more comments for John, let, let's move on to Department 104 Building. I believe I saw Steve Way in the panelists, yeah?
Steve is here.
Will you be speaking for, for your?
Muted here.
Okay, great, you're on.
Good evening. Nope, I think.
Hi, Steve. Yes, you're on.
Just touched something and went away. Hang on.
Bottom left of your screen.
We don't have to see you as long as we.
Okay, well.
It's probably better for everybody that way, Steve. Oh.
Yeah, well, I don't, yeah, I want to add a line item for haircuts and shaves or. Okay, I don't know if you want to just go with questions or if you want me to kind of walk through a little bit. I'll give you the basics, not a whole lot of.
Yeah, why don't you?
Not a whole lot has changed, but.
It was the basics and the highlights.
We are obviously in the middle of a couple of big projects this year, so our anticipated revenues from last year are significantly higher. I think we had anticipated 335,000, we've actually anticipating now well over 500,000 because of the Costco and some of the Gateway project. There's still some Gateway projects that are not permitted, some of the buildings over there. And a number of other projects, Rocky Neck Village and I think four more buildings at Gateway coming up that we know of, in addition to normal housing starts and normal permits. So we are anticipating our revenues for next year, 362,000 and change. I think you originally see it as 380,900. And that included a restructuring of the permit fees, which based on the world events, we're probably not going to get to raising the permit fees this year. So I backed that out, so the 362 is probably a more accurate number. People are still building. Throughout the year, our average permits are 23 a week. Last week, we issued 27, the week before that, 30, 12 today alone. Four, five new houses in the last two weeks, so people are still building, doing projects. So I'm fairly confident on the revenue side. On the expense side, we basically increased the assistant building official line to allow for more hours, so that's up 22,000, which will allow either one person or a second part-timer more hours. Again, most of our work comes sort of six months staggered after the fact that we get the permit. So a lot of the Gateway work, while they're paying the permit fees this year, the work we do doesn't happen until next fiscal year. And that, that's true of some of the projects that are underway, the current Gateway projects, the Dollar General, the 40 new houses that are under construction right now, Guy's Oil, Freedom, Freedom Way Storage Facilities, the Water Company, which pays no fees, but all those projects are going to be, being built out in the next year. 54 housing units on top of the 124 at Gateway this year. That puts us in the top 10 in the state of Connecticut for new housing. We, we generally do 30 hours a year of continuing education training. The state has, generally, we attend those, they're no cost other than travel to get there. The state has come up with a number of webinar and online seminars, scenarios that we're taking advantage of as well. That's the highlights.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Steve Way on Department 104? Any questions regarding this budget? Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, you adjusted downwardly the revenue number from 380,900 down to 362?
362, 762, if you want to be precise, but 362, 700, you know.
And that is not based on an anticipated decline in the building permits or anything? That's based on, you're saying you're pulling back on a redesign of the fee structure?
Yeah, where.
You were going to.
Right, that's based on what I anticipate for the number of permits without any increase in the fee structure. The original estimate included an increase in the fee structure, which based on the fact that we got to go through Board of Selectmen Town Meeting and so forth and the current world situation, I don't think we're logistically feasible this year.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Way?
Yeah, the, the Board of Selectmen Recommendations to recommend a cutback in, in some part-time hours, I'm just wondering what the impact of that would be. You're saying that you have an increased workload, understandably. I'm just wondering what that impact would be if, if that were to happen.
Well, I think, I don't necessarily support or not support it, I'll go along with it. I think based on our current learning curve, we've all learned to be a little bit more efficient and do things more remotely. We're accepting applications online now, whereas we didn't really accept them online before. I think shortly, Anna has got us set up, we're going to be accepting credit card payments. So we're utilizing the information superhighway to make ourselves a little bit more efficient. And part of that is there'll be less filing to do because it's digital filing now.
All right, well, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Way? Hearing none, I guess we can move on to the next department. Okay, thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Human Resources, Department 106. I believe we have Rebecca on the line for that.
Yes, good evening, Board of. Hello? Hey, so do you want highlights? Do you want to ask questions or do you want to go through this?
You don't have much there, Rebecca. Kind of a flat budget.
I can say.
Mark, why, why don't you talk about this budget since it might be one of those situations that could be a little awkward based on the increase? Why don't you talk to the need?
Based on the increase? Am I, do I have the same budget you have, 106?
Do you mean?
106.
Did you mean?
Do we have a flat budget here, Anna?
If you recall, the HR manager was part of the Finance Department Budget, 118. Earlier in the year, due to, we were seeing an increase in retirements and the 20 hours that we had budgeted for the position were no longer sufficient. We had gone to the boards and asked to increase the number of hours per week up to.
30.
30. And so at the time that we did that, the Board of Selectmen requested that HR be made into its own department. So that's why it looks like, looks like such an increase. So, you know, I'll stop there and let Rebecca continue.
So let me, so let me just, so the Board of Finance have already approved a position, an increase in hours for that position from 20 to 30 hours. Does this budget increase that further, another seven and a half hours?
No.
Yes, it does.
We have one no, we have one yes.
I have, I have it as no. Am I wrong? Oh, it does increase it.
It's.
I thought we were going to hold off because of the budget cuts, but yeah, it increases it to a full-time position, full hours.
Yeah, I don't see Mark Nickerson in, in your recommended reduction list that you gave us. There's nothing for this department list.
Right, we're keeping it.
Okay. So basically, this budget, then Rebecca is, in a nutshell, we're pulling it out of the Finance Department's budget, creating its own unique department, 106 Human Resources, and increasing the hours from 30 to 37 and a half. Correct?
That's correct, Camille, correct.
Basically, in, in a nutshell. Okay, so given, given that, do any Board of Finance members have any questions for Rebecca? Any questions regarding Department 106 Human Resources? Okay, I don't, I don't see any hands. I think we're all set. So thank you, Rebecca. Good evening.
Nice meeting all of you.
With that, we will move, we will move on to Department 107 Town Clerk. I see, I see, we did have, there she is, Karen. Okay, Karen. Let me unmute you.
Oh, there we go.
Karen, would you like to walk us through your budget?
Karen Galbo, Eastline Town Clerk. There were just two changes. The, there was one increase, which is salaries. And then there was an account, you'll see 293, that it was one of those accounts similar to one that we had last year, which was directly linked to a revenue account. So we took that out and it's. So we took that out and it's reduced to zero. And those are the only two changes. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, so, um, given the state of the society now with the COVID nineteen, do you see any savings due to like not having a referendum and use of the absentee ballots?
So we actually don't have anything budgeted for referendums at all. That's all on the registrar voter side. So we don't see any savings on that. We do have printing for, I mean, you know, it comes and goes. So we're still going to have the primary in August. We may so what's going to happen? The state has come up with an idea where a mailhouse is actually going to send out the ballots. So when we get the applications from a voter, we put it into our system and then the mailhouse is actually going to generate that ballot and send it out. So we may have some savings on printing of ballots. Now, that's definitely going to happen for the primary, and they're saying most likely for the election also, because they're anticipating a large increase in absentee ballots this year, obviously.
So I, I have a couple of questions, Karen. Thanks for that. So on the, on the revenue side, there's three components, the conveyance tax, the town clerk fees, and the small amount for fishing and gaming permits, I believe. Is that correct? Okay, so do you anticipate any changes in those two revenues, that conveyance tax and maybe your fees? I mean, I, you know, go ahead, I'll let you get in there.
Hard to say. I mean, we really haven't slowed down these, the last month and a half, two months. We're still doing everything that we were doing before, except notarizing. So people are still buying houses, people are, there's been a lot of refinancing. So as far as our office goes and our revenues, I don't really see that it's done much to our revenues at all.
Yeah, there was, okay, so, so that kind of confirms some things I've been reading about the local real estate market, that it's still moving along. Okay. And then my set of questions had to just quickly, the marriage licenses and the dog licenses, and now we're at showing those at zero. So is that something that, that, you know, you, you, well, you can explain with your state obligation there or whatever.
Yes, so exactly. It's a state obligation. Every dog license that we take in, if it's an eight-dollar dog license, we get a whole dollar and the state gets seven dollars and the unfixed dogs nineteen and one, eighteen and one. So we used to have an account budgeted that we would actually pay the state out of. That was directly linked to that, but we got rid of our budget account. So now the money comes in and goes out. Am I explaining that right?
Okay.
So essentially, what we're doing for those, because it's, the expense is directly related to revenue we take in, we, we're setting up a self-balancing account. So a thousand dollars comes in, we write the check to the state for a thousand dollars and that's up to zero.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Because I knew that it was happening. People were, were getting married and certainly having
Yes, people are getting married, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for me, Karen. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for our Town Clerk and her budget? Okay, don't see any other hands or questions from anybody. So I guess we'll, we'll end that discussion. Okay, thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen. Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Thanks.
With that, we are moving on to Department one oh eight, Health.
That's our Ledge Light Health District. Steve Mansfield could be on the call, as you know, he's a big guy these days. This is a, this is a fee-based budget item that, you know, they have a board of directors that tells us how much we will pay. They haven't gone up in price. In fact, you'll see a little decrease. And that's because our, our, our official population went down a little bit from the state and they based it on the official state population. Mostly that's prisoners. Obviously, you just heard Steve Way say we're one of the top ten new houses being developed in the state, growing community. But it's, it's the prisons that have lost population and that counts against our numbers. So really nothing to talk about other than they are fantastic. They, they provide a, a whole slew of services that once upon a time, way back when, well, before we were all well, John, John Birmingham was certainly here way back in the nineteen thirties or something. But, you know, we used to have a sanitarian. We used to have our own health district, department in our town. And we get so much more for so much less money now. And this is, I think they represent oh, well over a dozen towns. I think it's up to twenty towns or something. So they're a great outfit. They have my respect and we should all realize that we're getting great value out of Ledge Light Health District. Don't forget, coming up next, Triple E. I'm sorry to say that, but coming up next, Triple E. And they were instrumental in our, in our rollout of the information and prevention and caution back in the fall. And that's, 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 that's coming again.
Well, I couldn't agree more.
Yeah, this
I couldn't, I couldn't agree more, Mark. I think that, I think that for the service that we're getting from Ledge Light, it's top-notch and it's, it's really good value. This budget is significantly lower than what it used to be when we did this in-house. So that is a prime example of how outsourcing can, qualified outfit can really help benefit the town and taxpayers. I'm sorry Steve wasn't here, so we could thank him, but I'm sure he'll pass our thanks on to him. Okay, but before we move on, does anybody have any questions on the detail that was provided in the budget book? Just want to make sure everybody understands all of the data that was provided. Okay, so if nobody has any questions, we'll move on to the next department, which is Registars, Department one ten. Do we have anybody on the call from the registars?
I'm wondering if there's any random phone numbers because
There is
No doubt to Barbara. I haven't seen her enter. One or two of you might know Barbara. You might be able to, she might respond to me because I
Hang on, Mark. I'm going to check with somebody. Hello, this is Camille. I am looking at phone number nine one seven, seven six two five. Can you identify yourself, please?
Hi, Camille. It's Sandy Anderson.
Okay, Sandy, thank you. Do you mind if I
You're welcome.
If I tag you with the name?
Not at all.
Okay.
Sandy, you bored tonight? What's going on?
I understand, Andy.
No.
A rare night off and you decided to come to a meeting like the rest of us.
That, that is correct. It's good stuff.
That's a dedicated employee.
Oh, I got to mute.
So I do not see either registrar on the call. Were, were you going to text them, Mark, when they were up or?
Not Mary. It was Barbara that was supposed to come and I'm not seeing her. Maybe we give her some time and come back to this. I'll text her again.
Sure.
If you want to jump forward and then I'll, I'll text her another time.
Mary, oh, Mary wasn't going to attend, Mark?
No, Mary can't attend. She's got some family things going on, as you know.
Okay, let me look up, see if I can get a number on the thing from Mary.
Yeah, we definitely want to talk about this because there's some changes in the budget with regard to the primary move being moved out to August. So there are some definite changes in this budget that we have to talk about. So we will put that on hold for right now until we can get ahold of somebody.
Camille, do you have any seven three nine numbers in the attendees?
No, that would be, well
I have, I have an ELTH.
Town Hall. That might be Bill.
Let me ask.
It's one of our departments.
Hello, ELTH. Can you identify yourself, please?
I wonder if they don't know that, that they're coming up like that.
Bill, Bill Mahala, do you want the call?
Um, I can't even unmute that box. I'm not really sure what's happening.
So he doesn't have his microphone on. The town computers don't have video or mics, so he might not know that he can't zoom from, whoever it is doesn't know that they can't zoom. I can send him a chat, I suppose.
I think he just left us. Whoever it was bailed on us.
Okay. So we can go, we can just move on and jump, jump around a little bit if you don't mind.
So that would bring us to, I'm sorry, what was that?
General Government, I think, right?
Yes, General Government and miscellaneous, Department one fourteen.
Anna, you're going to take this? Mute, baby.
Sorry about that. I was muted. So this department is where we budget for all of our employee fringe benefits, our legal service, and some other town miscellaneous funds. So the first section is really, you know, referred to as personnel services. First of all is the payroll taxes. Next, and so I think that's self-explanatory. Workers' compensation, we are slated, we have, we have a lock-in agreement with Kermer, our insurance carrier. It's a three-year lock-in agreement. And so for next year, we're looking at a three percent increase in the workers' comp. And also included in that account is an additional ten thousand dollars. And that's that's to cover any payroll audit fees that we might have. So what happens at the end of every fiscal year? So when they set the premiums for the workers' comp, they actually, we have to provide them with our payrolls. And then at the end of the year, they come in and see if the payrolls are as we said they are. And if for any reason they're higher, then they bill us more. If they're, if they actually end up being lower, then they give us a refund. That's how that works. Pension, we've, we have seen quite an increase in that area. The reason for that is when, every year, we have an actuarial evaluation done for our defined benefit pension plan. And the last valuation, they, they changed the mortality tables again. And so what, what that, what that meant, it, it, we ended up having, I think this fiscal year, the, the annual required contribution went up thirty-three percent over the prior year. In the eighteen nineteen year, we paid just under seven hundred thousand. This year, our annual required contribution was nine hundred thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. So that was a thirty-three percent increase. The projected amount for next year is a little low. It's one million eighty-five thousand for the town, which is a sixteen percent increase. And that's the main driver for that. And the change in the mortality tables is because people are living longer. So when they do the calculations to see what our future payout for the pension plan benefits are, you know, we're going to be paying out over a longer period of time. So we have to, on the other side, fund it. The next two accounts, life insurance and long-term disability. In the narrative, it explains what groups have them, how much they, they get, and what the, what the formula is to calculate that. The next account, health and dental care. Beginning this fiscal year, we went to the state two point O plan. And with that, I will say that when we've been getting the quarterly reports from the state, our claims have actually decreased substantially. Our, our experience is beginning to go the other way. Next fiscal year, we were just in the process of receiving the rates, which is about a four and a half percent increase. I will, so this account budgets for the health insurance, the dental, the dental insurance as well as paying a consultant to assist us in managing our health and dental plans. We do have some employees that opt for a waiver. Our collective bargaining agreements have waivers. So if the full-time employee opts not to take our health insurance and proves to us that they have other health insurance, they get an annual payout. They range from, I believe, fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. And then in addition, it also includes funding for doing the financial OPEP calculations that are required for our annual audit. We also have, we pay for physicals for all of the part-time and volunteer firefighters. And then there's a small amount in there for injured workers premium that we have to pay. I've been reviewing and re-reviewing the numbers. And when you do your deliberations on Wednesday, I expect to have an additional recommendation for you to decrease that, the amount that's currently in the budget. The next account, retirement liability. We've been including this in our budget for the past few fiscal years. At the end of the year, we do an analysis of our unfunded liability for accrued benefits for our employees. And the number has, you know, it's like on June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, it was at one point one million dollars. We do have, we've talked about this. We have an aging workforce. And as individuals begin to leave, we're going to be required to pay out those balances. So we've started budgeting for this. And in addition, we, at the end of a fiscal year, we've been carrying over the remaining balance to build this up. Because obviously, a hundred thousand dollars wouldn't get us very far if we had more than one large retirement. If employees would give us sufficient notice, in other words, if you plan, if they plan to retire in the upcoming year, if they would let us know this when we were working on the budget, it would be a lot easier for us to, to budget for this. The next area is legal services. We did, at the time that we put the budget together, we did make, you know, we reduced what we were asking for. We do track this. We keep a historical record of what we spend each year for the legal fees. So that when we build the budget in the following year, it helps us coming up with what we, you know, what we do for estimates. It's, it's very difficult. We do our best to predict. And, you know, if you have, you just never know if you're going to have something that comes up that's going to require a lot of additional legal expenses. Like, for example, when COVID, you know, when, when this pandemic hit us, on both the labor and the general government side, we needed to seek, you know, legal advice on how to interpret some of the executive orders and even how to interpret some of the law relative to, you know, different benefits that our employees may be eligible for. And then the next area are some contracted services, unemployment compensation. So the way it works for cities and towns is we only pay when we have someone that's, you know, collecting that was a former employee. We're not, you know, so we get billed on and as a current basis. I will, I will note that we, and I believe in the, in the narrative, I included the historical analysis so that you can see what, you know, annually the expenditures have been. And I will say that we've been very fortunate in the, you know, last few years, we, you know, with kind of like lower, lower charges. On the last bill, we did notice that there were a few more claimants because of the pandemic. I will say though, that they're for small amounts because they're individuals that were working for us seasonally or on a part-time basis that probably have other full-time jobs and maybe lost and maybe lost a full-time job for whatever reason. And the next, the eviction, that's a small amount we budget by state statute. If someone is evicted within, that lives within the town, in the town, we're on the hook for paying the eviction fees. The next one, checking town indices. That's a requirement that we have our land records audited annually. The individual that's, that does this for us hasn't increased the fees in, in years. This has been the fee we've been paying for years. Is our insurance liability, auto and personal property. There again, that's with Kerma, and we have that late rate lock agreement, no more than a 3% increase in the upcoming fiscal year. The employee assistance is just, we have a contract so that if any of our employees needs any special assistance, we can send them there. And then we have some, an allowance for professional training in the event that something comes up that a department didn't have sufficient funding for, or in the event that we want to do something here in, in the town for our employees. And then the last line item are various organizations that the town, the town belongs to. Like, for example, CCM, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. We also belong to Council of Small Town and the Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments, to name a few. So there's annual dues and their, you know, basically employee, I mean, municipal advocacy organizations. So I've kind of gone through everything. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so under legal services, it says legal ads. So my question is, are you using electronic filing for ads instead of in the paper? Because I know that's what I, I thought they were switching over to that now.
We wish. We wish. It's still a legal state statute that we publish, literally publish ads in the newspaper. We would love to post it online electronically or on our, we, on a, on a big, we've cut this way down, on a big ordinance that might be pages and pages long. We will reference, please check the email, for, for a paper copy, contact the town clerk, and we will mail one out, or we'll send it to the website. But, but typically, we have to put notices in the newspaper for all these meetings, for things like this, regularly scheduled meetings.
Okay, all right.
Town meetings.
Yeah, no, no, no. I, I was just thinking like legal notices. I know in court now, they're doing more stuff online, you know, electronically. They're giving notices. So I didn't know if that had transferred over to the town yet.
It's a big, it's a big moneymaker for the newspapers, and they have a strong lobby. That's all I can say.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for benefits for Anna?
I do.
Or Mark? Yes, Anne?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I got, I've got two questions. One is about insurance costs. So that would be account, it would be 290? So just, and I know that we have a very good deal, and there's a limitation on yearly increases and so forth. Has there been any discussion at all about savings currently, you know, but savings going forward if the buildings remain closed and there's less risk involved? You know, there won't be people there in some of the buildings from time to time. We don't have the meetings we had. And I think going forward, even if we open up as a society, which looks like it's happening, it's going to take time before we can reinstate ourselves, so to speak.
So I, I, I heard you ask that question the other night with Board of Ed, and I, of course, I wasn't in a position to respond because you mentioned rollbacks, like, you know, like all the, like my favorite company is doing, but all the companies are doing for your personal auto insurance, you're getting the rollbacks. They're not doing that with commercial risks yet. I will say that all our vehicles are on the road. Our public works has been back to work, and our police have never stopped patrolling. So really, I wouldn't see anything on the auto insurance side. You know, you, you bring up a good point, liability-wise, no trip and falls going on right now. Maybe there's a slight decrease, but our buildings still stand and have a fire risk and all that. But we do, I, your point is well-made, and I, I think it's a good time to insert the fact that this is a mutual company. This is actually a division of CCM.
Right.
Kerma is, right? So it's a mutual company. It's, it's not a for-profit company. So when they do have savings at the end, we get rebate checks back at the end of every year. Anna might be able to point to the, the budget where we show a revenue side that we, we have revenue, and it was substantial this year. We've, we've really maintained some good risk controls in our town over the last couple of years.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. That's great. So, yeah, where is that, if Anna knows off the top of her head, what is the line item in revenues that that corresponds to that?
So it's, oh, 8-800-831. And so this fiscal year, we received $62,827.
That, that's great.
So to your point, if, if Kerma recognizes that there have been less claims within the policy year, perhaps they'll increase the percent of the, you know, equity distribution.
Okay, so, so we'll say there may be an, there may be, yeah, an increase in your equity distribution along the way. And, and what, what time of year do you see that? When does that happen?
It comes, it typically comes at the beginning of the fiscal year, within the first 60 to 90 days.
Okay, okay. My other question was just maybe for Mark or Anna, a little bit, a little bit of fuller explanation. I read the narrative, which was very good, by the way, but a little bit more detail on your, you know, the defined benefit versus defined contribution plan and where we're headed as a town on that. Because obviously, at this point, we don't have as many defined contribution plans. But where are we headed with that as time goes on? And this is, and you don't have to go into grand detail, but just, just, just an FYI for everyone.
Anna, you'd be best to describe that. Of course, these are all baked into, well, they're baked into the union contracts that we have. Though we, we were successful years ago to get one group out, but none of the others would budge, and they, they remain in the defined benefit contract. Our unaffiliated, of course, are in the defined contribution plan. So your department heads are in that other plan. But Anna, if there's any more detail you could give, I think it's more status quo. I don't see any movement either way, Anna. If that's your question is where we're headed, we're headed straight.
The only other group that's in the defined contribution plan are, are new hire firefighters.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, so that's the only other, other group. None of the other unions were willing to make that change during negotiations to transition from the defined benefit to the defined contribution.
Okay, all right. Thanks. I, I just wanted to get a little bit of an update on that. You know, because I know, I mean, yeah, the non-governmental world is, is
Oh, yeah.
changing a little faster on this, in this era. So it, you know, you know, over time, it will happen. It's just going to be at maybe a glacial pace.
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions on benefits for Anna and/or Mark? Okay, I'll go because I do have a couple of questions with regard to this department also. And I, I was very confused in looking at the budget this year because I had seen that the pension for the 2018/19 budget year was $914,460 in a prior report. And this year's budget book shows that as $817,605. So I can't recall what happened, what would make that number go down by almost $100,000 year over year?
Are you talking about the pension?
The pension number has moved.
One, Department 120, Department 114 line item 124.
Yeah, so the actuarial numbers and then the number of people on the plan, and you'll speak to that in detail.
Yes, but I, say, say your question again for me, please, Camille.
Sure. So I thought in the fiscal year 2018/19, we had budgeted $914,460. And now in this year's budget book, I see that that very line item shows a 2019 actual expense of $817,605. So what happened to the $97,000? I, I don't recall. So we budgeted over $900,000 for the pension contribution. And then the 2019 actual expense came in at $817,000. So I just don't recall what happened to that $97,000.
You know, I, I would have to look that up to be able to respond to that, Camille.
That's fine. Would you mind just jotting that down?
Yep.
Great. And also related to this pension account, if we were to approve this year's budget, what percentage of our obligation would we meet? What would we be at if we were to approve this number presented here, $1.2 million?
Okay, so are you, so what we typically always plan to do is fund 100% of the annual actuarial required contribution. But I believe your question is, if we make this contribution, what percent funded will the plan be?
Yes.
Okay, we have typically been around 80% funded. So one year's contribution isn't going to dramatically increase us much, much above that, that amount. However, you know, that's considered a good, you know, a, a, a good municipal-funded plan. The important, the key and the important, the town has historically made the annual required contribution 100% as recommended by the annual actuarial report that we have done.
Right, and I understand that the, that recommendation has gone up substantially based on new mortality tables. But a 35% increase is an awful lot of money to put on the backs of the taxpayers in one year. And so that's why I'm wondering, with that large contribution, the 35% increase, is that still only going to get us the 80% funded of our total obligation?
So, so the, the increase, it was this fiscal year that we were hit with a 33% increase. The projected increase in, that we have included in next year's budget is actually 16%.
Is that because of the transfer in that we made this year?
No.
But we, so we transferred in $169,000 from the health insurance fund to this pension account this year.
That's correct.
So are you saying after that transfer that we made, that the increase is now only 16%?
No, the, the increase, the increase in the annual required contribution that was made this fiscal year, meaning 1920, was a 33% increase over the annual required contribution in the 1819 fiscal year. The projected increase for the 2021 fiscal year is 16%.
I guess I'm not understanding where you're getting 16% from because my budget book that I'm looking at says 35.08%.
That's in the, so that, so in other words, that's the difference between next year's proposed budget and this year's adopted budget. Which makes sense when you think about it because the increase in this year's amount was 33%, but we didn't budget enough for it because we had to transfer in from another account.
So we don't know what percentage of the obligation we would meet if we fully funded this line item to the tune of $1.2 million? We don't know if it'll be 78%, 80%, 82%?
Be somewhere in that, in that general vicinity, at the 80% level. Because remember, when we make the annual required contributions, we're, they're amortizing that over like a 20-year period because what we're, what we're budgeting is to pay, to have enough money on hand to pay a prescribed benefit at a certain point in time in the future.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But as you know, like, this is a challenging year. Well, they're all challenging years. Let's face it. For the past 10 years, we have not had an easy time with anything because Connecticut has really lagged behind everybody in the union. All right, but that being said, this is especially challenging. So if we could get away with maybe funding it, you know, by $1.1 million and save 100 there, that would be an option for us.
Well, the, the unfortunate.
Without getting into too much trouble.
The, the issue there is then we would have to, we would have to disclose in our financial statements that we did not make the annual required contribution in accordance with the actuarial recommendation.
This number doesn't come from you, Anna, right? It comes from our actuarial or finance person.
Right, the, we use USI as the actuary for the pension plan, and they provide us with these calculations.
And we have never had that write-up before, as far as, as I can remember, correct? For not meeting that, we've always met that obligation in the past.
That's correct.
Okay, and then the other question I had.
And if, and if I, if I just might, I mean, when you think about it, that's why the state of Connecticut is in trouble with the teacher's retirement pension because it not make the annual required contribution.
Yeah, oh, yeah. No, I totally understand. I totally get it. I totally get it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that we do that. I mean, if we were really, really desperate, maybe, but I would not be in favor of that. Okay, so my other question is, based on the recent policy that the Board of Selectmen implemented, requiring town employees to utilize their unused personal time in lieu of time off, can we reduce that 100? How much did we save? Can we reduce that $125,000? Not, well, not the rich, what is it? Which is the account that is the liability for?
128 retirement liability.
120.
I, I don't.
How much do we save by implementing that policy is the question?
Well, I would actually have to look at, I mean, that's a, you know, a, something I'm trying to explain. So, for example, all of our first responders have been working. And so their time is still there on the books. And they are the groups that have the higher, you know, the higher amount of accruals. That's where the real dollars are. The one group that we have the memorandum of understanding with, they're a group that not, I, I, let me, a, a large percent of that group do not have the large unfunded liabilities.
So that you're, so you're referring to the group that belongs to the UPSEU union?
Correct.
And, and the liability that we had in terms of unpaid time on the books for that particular union is not included in this $125,000?
Well, if one of them retired and they had, they were eligible for a payout, yes, in fact, it would be. This is just making a budgetary provision to, you know, make payments on that undefunded liability should employees choose. make payments on that undefunded liability should employees choose to retire during an upcoming fiscal year.
I mean, I under, I understand, but it's the same exact amount as last year. So I was thinking that maybe we could save a little bit this year because of that policy that was put into place with the UPSU union.
Unfortunately, it's-
So no employee, so, so we've been paying all of the town employees full-time, whether they've had reduced work hours or not, in the past two months?
No.
Mo, I would say, well, for the most part, i- if they have time on the books that, you know, they can use, yes, we have been paying them. However, there are some employees that have low balances, and so they're not getting paid a hundred percent of their salary. They're just getting paid for what they work and, um, a little bit of their, um, leave time as they're choosing to use it.
So this is just a ballpark number, then? There's really no analysis behind this one hundred and twenty-five number? No, what, Mark?
It's a, it's a ballpark number.
It's a, it's a-
It's a ballpark number.
That's correct.
Okay, so maybe, maybe this is something that we can work on and actually do a little analysis on that to find out what our true liability is there?
Because it, it's, it's based on who's going to retire in the next coming year. And if you have two cops retire and they, they're owed thirty thousand dollars each in liability, they're sixty.
But what you do, yeah, but what you do, what you do is you assume that they're going to retire, and then you, then you figure out what the, um, what the liability is.
But you don't-
And then you say, okay, let's say the, let's say the liability is a million dollars. Right now, if everybody that was eligible to retire retired, we would have to pay out a million dollars. We've got five hundred thousand dollars in the fund. So then we'd, we'd have to come up with another five hundred thousand in one year if everybody retired. But we know that's not going to happen. So let's, let's fund it a hundred thousand dollars a year for the next five years. There, there should be some sort of plan here, um, rather than just a ballpark figure.
Some years, nobody retires, and we have that money, and we send it back out to unfund, unfunded mandate, uh, uh, undesignedated, uh, fund, uh, this ready-day fund. And some years, we run out, have run out. In some years, we didn't fund this at all, and then we were scrambling trying to come up with money and go and borrowing money. It, 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 it is a ballpark we put in, it's a, it's a good number. You know, you could do all the analysis in the world, and the next year, if five people retire, and you don't have enough money.
So the-
And the following year, nobody retires, and you get all that money sitting there. You just don't know, this is just a way to buffer your budget, to cushion your budget if we get, um, you know, uh, people retiring. We have an aging workforce, we know people are going to retire, but it's not always convenient that they tell us, here we are in May, but usually in March, when we're developing this budget, that next December or next March, I'm going to retire. We don't know that. Some people give us a year's notice, most don't.
Okay, okay, fine, let's, let's move on.
No, that's the real challenge, Camille, is that, um, if in a perfect world, when we were, when we're building the budget, if anyone that planned to retire in the upcoming fiscal year would let us know, we would be able to come up with, you know, spot on, but it unfortunately just doesn't work that way.
Have you worked on, Mark, changing the, um, employee handbook in this regard? I know for several years in a row, we had talked about the idea of use it or lose it, especially for new employees that are rolling onto the town payroll. Has any change been made at all with it, with regard to that policy?
Joe's working on a new employee handbook, and he rolled out to his group, and I think we're going to adopt it to the UPSU, uh, group as well. You can't change use it or lose it, you can't change anything with your benefits without a union agreement.
Exactly, so have we done any, have we, have we broached the subject with the union leaders?
Reduce their ability to ink, uh, to accumulate, um, and, and rolled some of that back depending on the union. We've made great strides in our union negotiations with, um, their, um, their accumulated time.
Okay. That's all I have. Does anybody else have any questions for Anna or Mark this evening regarding benefits? No? Okay, see, everybody's shaking their head no. Okay, thank you, we'll move on. We're up to zoning, Department one sixteen.
Bill, are you here? Bill's not here. Let's just put this open, I don't think there's anything in there anyway. Virtually nothing but, uh, but the, uh, EWA. Zoning Commission is always pretty, uh, pretty simple and in-your-face.
Okay, so, um, do any of our commission members have any questions with regard to the budget for Department one sixteen zoning? Any questions at all? No. Okay. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to the next department, Planning, one seventeen. I do see that Gary, excuse me, I do see that Gary Geisha was on the phone, so let me actually promote him to panelist.
That's Bill, oh boy, I think that was Bill, uh, nine one seven seven, uh, maybe it isn't. No, I don't think-
Gary?
Yes, good.
Can you hear us, Gary?
Yeah, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. Sorry, the light in the background here, I'm good. Okay, planning, um, it's a pretty straightforward budget, uh, most of it is salary. You'll see that we-
Excuse me, Gary, um, you're, can you just, for the record, say your title for the town?
Uh, Director of Planning.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I think it's a pretty straightforward budget, uh, the majority of it is salary. You'll see that we moved, uh, the, the line item for services contracted for GIS, uh, implementation and maintenance of equipment, um, over to the IT budget. And so the remaining items are literally professional conventions, transportation, printing, and miscellaneous items. Uh, we did increase, increase the transportation allowance. The last two years, we've exceeded the two hundred dollars that was budgeted. This year, the Board of Selectmen, uh, supports a five hundred dollar allotment in that regard. I think we, we will use it, certainly under the current conditions. Uh, I am driving my own personal vehicle more frequently, um, than using the, the municipal vehicle. Other than that, I don't know if you have any other questions in regards to this budget. Uh, in terms of our revenues, uh, we're projecting the same, uh, moving forward. Uh, our last discussion with Anna at our department head meeting indicated that those haven't really changed since, uh, after, after Hurricane Sandy. Those revenues really didn't change a whole lot, so we're kind of anticipating the same going forward as a result of COVID. But we'll have to kind of wait and see how the land use business plays out.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the Planning Director, Gary? No questions for Gary?
Okay.
Okay, thanks for hanging in there, Gary.
Thank you.
Gary's got a few more, uh, departments, I don't know if you want to just roll through his. Wetlands. One thirty-two.
Yep, and, um, I'm just looking down the list. That's the only other one, correct?
Right, and the board has, so the board of feet peels, but we can do that.
Okay, so, yeah.
Natural Resources, one thirty-eight.
So that, yeah, okay, so that, yeah, Mark has taken over that role for me. Thank you.
Mark, Mark is going to talk about Conservation and Natural Resources tonight? Okay, so if it pleases the board, let's have Gary continue on with Department one thirty-two, Inland Wetlands.
Again, I'm the, uh, wetland agent as well for the town. Uh, this is a pretty straightforward budget, uh, most of it is salary. We have a consultant, uh, line two forty-three, it's a pass-through account. We budgeted just a placeholder of a thousand for that. That's if the agency wants to retain, uh, a consultant for plan review, that fee is passed on as a complex application fee to the applicant, which would cover those actual expenses that the town would incur as a result of contracting a private consultant to review a plan. Again, the remainder of this budget is postage, meeting conferences. Uh, we do, do use that, commissioners are taking advantage of the, um, that line this year in particular. Uh, we did have a significant amount of turnover in the commission, so we have four or five new members who are, who are utilizing the meeting conferences line item, uh, and training. Dues and membership, the majority of that, uh, is typically played to the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, um, for support services that they will provide, be it plan review. Uh, they also provide some staff support for the Nynek River Watershed Commission. So in past years, that dues membership has been zeroed out, and we have not paid anything to Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, uh, depending on the year. Other years, we have, so if, you know, it'd still be my intention to provide them, uh, u- utilize their, their services. Judy Rondo does an exceptional job of providing assistance to both the town engineer and myself on plan reviews, uh, as well as some of the things that they do. A good example is the rain garden behind the baseball field at the high school. Uh, that's something that the Eastern Connecticut Conservation did in conjunction with our town engineer. So that, I, I think it's money well spent, uh, but again, it is discretionary. So it's up to the board on that one. Uh, again, I'm not recommending it be cut, but if, if you had to find money to cut, I would start there.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Does anybody have any questions for the Inland Wetlands Officer?
I have.
Yes, Anne.
Um, Gary, you've provided, um, a, uh, an estimate form, uh, following your budget document there. And am I reading that correctly, that, that, um, there might, you were estimating six thousand five hundred dollars in revenue for the twenty twenty-one year?
It was, uh, that's total, yes.
Total, okay, so when you have that, the revenue of two thousand dollars on your budget document, should they be the same, or did I, did I miss something? I'm not, I'm not sure.
We have, uh, agent approvals, a thousand.
If, if I might, if I may, the, the two thousand dollars represents town revenues. The other revenues would, would go, um, to the state of Connecticut, that's why they're not included here.
Okay.
The sixty-dollar state fee.
Okay, okay, thank you, thanks.
Any other questions for, um, on this Department one thirty-two? Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll, um, move on to the next department. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, be well, stay safe.
You too.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Mark.
So we are moving on to the Finance Department, eighteen. Anna's department.
So, so, um, this is, um, another department that, um, most of the, um, most of the budget is salaries. Included is the, um, the, the treasurist salary, which is an electric position. My salary, of which a portion of it is also funded in the water and sewer operating budgets. Um, we have a, a part-time staff accountant that comes in about eight hours a week, and that employee's primary responsibility is to, um, balance and reconcile all of our, um, different bank accounts that we have. In addition, um, she also does the, um, uh, tax reconciliations, which is reconciling what we have posted in our accounting records to what the tax collector has posted in their, um, their tax collection system. We have, um, I have two, uh, full-time, uh, thirty-seven and a half hour employees and one thirty-hour-a-week employee. The thirty-seven and a half hour positions are the payroll specialist and the accounts receivable cash receipt specialist. The accounts payable, um, specialist is thirty, currently thirty hours a week. The, as we discussed earlier, the HR manager position was moved to, um, an independent department. I also have, um, some part-time funding budgeted, um, in the event that, um, we have special projects, it, it, it has, um, it gives a resource to, um, be able to, um, pay someone to assist. And the rest is miscellaneous supplies, uh, conferences and, um, mileage, as well as our accounting software annual fee. And that's, um, about it.
Okay, does anybody have, have any questions for the Finance Director and, and her budget? Any questions on any of that detail that was presented? Okay, thanks, Anna. Seeing no questions, we'll move on. This is the Board of Finance, Department one twenty-six. The part-time recording secretary is for our secretary that takes minutes during our meetings. She is still currently working with us on the Zoom webinars. The biggest expense that we have in our budget is for audit services. Anna Johnson has informed us that the auditor that we had previously for the past five, six, seven years, um, will no longer be able to maintain us as a client. So it is my understanding that we will need to go out to bid for this. I will say, several years ago, a couple of Board of Finance members and Anna Johnson were able to negotiate the contract priced down considerably. And I don't know if that thirty-five thousand is still a reasonable amount going forward as we are looking for a new auditor. What is your feeling on that, Anna?
That could, um, it, it could be an issue for us.
So perhaps what we may have to do, I'm, I'm actually okay with that number being budgeted, but I think that we may need to make an allowance in a contingency fund somewhere. Well, that's just something for our board to think about, uh, because that is an open item. We don't have a contract for, uh, for the next couple of years, and we'll have to get one. Printing and miscellaneous supplies are there, um. Do you charge our department, Anna, for the printing of the packets that we receive monthly?
So act, um, primarily the, um, the pack, what you get charged for are creating the budget books and all of the supplies for that.
Okay.
To print the copies for what we mail you is not, is actually not charged there.
Okay.
So I just have a quick question. Camille, you're saying that we may have to go out to bid for a new auditor. Are you saying that you think the number that we're going to be charged is going to be more than the thirty-five, based upon the fact that we had the other auditor for so many years? Or do you think that will come under that?
Well, I know that several years ago, when we were con, when we were going out to bid for this, that we were successfully able to negotiate the price downward considerably. I don't know what the likelihood of that is, you know, given that here we are four or five years later. So I'm thinking, my best guess is probably it's not going to be that low. Uh, but we won't know until we put out the bid and, and start receiving them.
Okay.
I believe, yeah, we could talk about this offline, but I, I believe that Rich Steele and I are on that audit subcommittee with Anna, and so we'll be the ones probably reviewing, um, the bid packet that goes out when they come back in. So, uh, we'll, we'll talk offline about a timeframe for that, Anna. As soon as we set the mail rate- As soon as we set the mill rate, we'll get on that, okay? All right.
Thank you.
Yep, anybody else have any questions regarding the Board of Finance budget? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on. We already covered the Board of Assessment Appeals earlier, so we're back. What is this zoning Board of Appeals? Mark, are you going to speak to that? I don't see anybody from zoning on the call.
There we go, can you hear me now? Yes, it's a very simple budget. It's zoning Board of Appeals meets or doesn't meet according to need. They run a very minimal budget, mostly for recording secretary issues and then, you know, miscellaneous costs, which are the packets and and any related copying materials or presentations that need to happen and appeal. But that's it, very simple, I'll be here for any questions.
Any questions on the ZBA Department 130? Okay. Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on maybe to one more department before we take a short 10-minute break. And it looks like we are up to Department 133, the Waterford East Line Shellfish Commission.
Right, so I don't think anyone's here. I haven't seen our chair. Of course, he, you know, Waterford Shellfish Commission, East Line Shellfish Commission is obviously a duly, it's a, it's made up of two towns, members from two towns. It is a a state required commission. The state decided we needed this and 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 so the charter comes from the state. But we appoint for, they appoint for it, we do fund this, we did reduce this significantly. They are authorized to maintain their own cash account. So they issue permits for shell fishing. And they keep the revenues because it's not a town agency, it's a state agency, they're allowed to do that. We're changing some of the ways we deal with them, given some of the political things that have happened over the last year or two. But what we did, a significant cost is we took out our contribution, our town's contribution for the pump-out boat. So you see us, maybe it's 1,500, maybe it's $2,000 difference, I'm trying to find the difference here.
So it looks like you reduced their budget by $2,250.
Yeah, so we took up. What we're asking them to do is they have a significant balance and we think they should work that down to a prudent reserve. They have a significant balance, like six-figure balance that they maintain. So we think that in 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 conjunction, in concert with the first selectmen in Waterford, we said, well, we're going to pull back on our funding of the Wellsco. We're going to ask them to fund themselves or be, try to be self-sufficient. They collect fees for permitting and they can use some of that expenses for for the pump-out boat in which we share a cost with Waterford and the state of Connecticut. I'm here to answer any questions.
Oh, Camille, we can't hear you.
Hear me now? Okay, I had my, my nose in the budget book over here in the detail. So it looks like from what I can see, they're in sore need of a new pump-out boat?
No, I don't think so.
Well, so what you're saying is they, you were requesting them to tap into their reserves, which you believe to be in the six figures?
Yep.
And that's why you've cut their budget by two-thirds?
And Waterford did as well, by equal amounts. We both agreed to the same amount that they would get funding for that particular expense through their, through their own funding.
Well, it's really difficult to follow because the two towns have a different ways of funding this particular commission. So it's really hard to connect the dots here. But you were saying that Waterford cut their budget by the same amount?
They, they, again, you're right, they do, we do it different ways. So I think actually in our, Anna, correct me if I'm wrong. So so we actually give money to another department who pays for the pump-out boat or gives it to them. How does that work? Where's the savings coming in? And now I'm confused.
It's harbor management.
Harbor management pays Wellsco or Wellsco pays harbor management? I forget.
Harbor management pays Wellsco.
So where's the savings, where's this $2,200 savings coming from? What are we not funding?
So we, we didn't, we didn't fund. We didn't fund the pumping out of the boat in the harbor management department. We eliminated that.
Okay, but what does this savings represent then?
I thought it had to do with wanting Wellsco to use some of their reserves.
For their other expenses then?
Correct.
Yeah. There's got to be more detail than that though. I don't have it.
Well, this is a, this is a very complicated department, although the budget dollars aren't that high because there's a lot of moving parts to it and there's a lot of different parties involved. But essentially, what this commission does is they have a boat, is it, is it Save the River, Save the Hills that owns the boat?
No.
Or or no, the commission owns the boat. But what they do is they pump out waste from residential boats to keep our river clean, correct? So if we cut the budget here and ask them to use the reserves to make up the difference in the same year that they need to buy a new boat?
They don't.
Well, I heard, I spoke to them, Mark, and they said that they need to buy a new boat, which could take.
They might need to buy a new boat someday. They might need to buy a new boat someday. Again, they have like $140,000 in the bank. There's plenty of money for a boat or an engine or what they might need. They, the reason why they're allowed to build up this big reserve is once upon a time, Waterford and Eastline did not claim them as part of their government. They said, oh, it's a state's responsibility. And they got into some kind of a lawsuit and nobody would protect them. So what we've done in the meantime is got a definitive answer from Kirma that they would be protected under the Board of Directors liability and any liability that comes upon them in any lawsuits. And we would represent them as towns. We have done that since the issue with the shellfish and all that recently. And the towns have split some of the the funding on that. But yeah, that's where we're at and we met with the chairman and he was on board with us.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions of Mark? Regarding Department 133? Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Does it make sense to go right to harbor management, Mark? Your, does it make sense to move to harbor management? Or is it okay if we just go in order?
Just go in order.
Okay.
They're not really related, they don't, they don't work together very well.
Then we are up to the Brookside Farm Museum, Department 134. Who is speaking on their behalf this evening?
Barbara's here. But, oh no, I'm sorry, Barbara's not part of that. It was Gary, but he couldn't make it, so I guess I am.
Okay, that's the floor.
It's, I'll answer any questions you might have. As you might know, Brookside Farm, which was the the Smith Harris House previously, part of the deal when we bought the house is it was town responsibility for the upkeep of the house. It is the official town historic building and museum. And with that house came all that land to build middle schools and lilybee schools and little leagues and and even the UBS, which is now Riverhead Lumber Supply. All that was part of that farm. Oh, and of course, the community center. So it was debated quite a bit way back in the, I think, the 50s, early 60s. This is what we came up with. We are responsible for the upkeep of that 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 facility. They do have a curator as they have embarked on a an aggressive plan to with Barbara, who's on the call about documenting town historic items, et cetera. And they work in conjunction with all the other groups in town. But you know, if there's any questions, otherwise it's, I believe it's a flat budget.
It is a flat budget. Does anybody have any questions on this particular department 134? Yes, Anne?
I have one question, Mark. I know, I believe the barn is not heated, but how how is the house heated? Is it oil, propane?
I think it's electric, am I right, Anna? I think they turn it, I think they zone it off, I think it's electric.
Okay.
Could it be, Anna, based on the?
I would say yes.
Yeah, based on the utility costs. I mean, it's frigid in there all the time.
Yeah.
They'd rarely use it in the wintertime because of that.
Yeah, and the barn is not heated at all.
Right.
Well, meeting in the air and freezing, okay.
Or sweating.
Right, okay, um, okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay.
Thanks.
If I could make one comment?
Yes, please, Barbara.
I did speak to Gary earlier today and he just wanted to remind everyone that there will be some small refunds to the budget because much of the programming that that Brookside Farm had anticipated doing will not take place. And so that had been funded. He just wants you to know that the money will be coming back and he'd like you to kind of, you know, remember that next year when the budget comes up because they'd be happy to spend it within the following year.
I'm sorry, Barbara, I feel like I should know this, but who is Gary?
Oh, I'm sorry, Gary Lakowski, who I believe is the chair of the commission, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Was on the Board of Finance or Selectman or something, just a couple, well, not a couple decades now. But a good, good overall guy. You know, some of these budgets are going to have this kind of leftover money. It might be, it's a conversation I'd like to have at some point, is maybe taking the money out of next year's budget and rolling the money over. It will reduce, I mean, we've already appropriated the money, right? So we've already charged the taxpayers for that money that's sitting in Gary's account right now and so many other accounts. If we can identify fatter pieces of money instead of the little, you know, the couple hundred dollars. But every dime counts, right? But that will take a burden off of next year's taxes and the mill rate and the job that you have to do. If we can specifically identify that, those funds to come off and roll. Don't forget, the the Veterans Group did that with their Memorial Day party, the Memorial Day Parade. They said, don't give us any money next year. We have the money and, of course, we already cut them a check. So it's not like we're rolling the money in a town budget. We cut them a check, the Veterans Group, and they're going to just hold that money and spend it next year on the parade.
So for, for instance, how much was that?
Veterans Group?
How much was the check that was cut?
Thirty-two hundred dollars, I believe. And that's coming off at services to the community. And you'll see the first, the the Selectman reduced many, many items on that particular budget.
So that's why, so that's why it went down to zero because the event was canceled. They didn't spend, they won't be spending the money in this year's fiscal budget, but they're just going to keep it in their account to use for next year. So we just have to be.
It's not its own account, so it's not, you know, like Gary would have to ask you to roll it over. And we sometimes do that, right? We sometimes roll the money over, but.
No, I understand, I understand. We just have to be careful how we account for that, right? Right, Anna? That's kind of like, that's kind of like an asset on our books, right?
Yeah, I.
It's an asset on our books at the end of this fiscal year because we're prepaying an expense. So that is one way to handle it. Another way certainly would be to take the money back and make make a contribution from the undesignated fund balance back into the budget.
And that's where it would go.
If we tally up all those items, then we can come up with a figure for that to help defray the cost to the taxpayers.
Barbara. We were talking to Gary. You just referenced line item 236 about all the activities that they have to raise revenue. Did he indicate at all how much of that $1,700 might be coming back?
He did not. He simply mentioned that that all of their spring activities right up to and through the Mother's Day activities obviously did not take place. And I think he anticipates everything all the way through the summer not to take place.
Right, what do you have for encumbered, Anna, on that line? Do you have?
There's currently nothing encumbered and we've spent $337. So, you know, there's a little over $1,200 remaining. And I wouldn't expect that we'll be expending any of that in light of the.
Right.
Right. I don't want to speak for him with regard to specific amounts of money, but I can't, but I can tell you that that's going to take place.
I'm glad that, I'm glad that you brought that to our attention, Barbara, thank you. So if there aren't any further questions on Department 134, we will take a short 10-minute break. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, let's take a little break. Let's come back, the time is now 8:38, let's come back at about 8:48. Thanks. Okay, the time is now 8:50 PM. We're ready to resume the Monday evening, May 11, 2020, Board of Finance Special Meeting. Next up on our agenda is the Town Building Committee, Department 135. Will be presenting this budget to us this evening.
Well, we will. See, there's not much to it, it's mostly recording secretaries, they meet as needed, they'll be meeting again this year in some fashion. So the budget stands as presented, it's generally a flat budget and they do invaluable work to the town.
A flat budget for Department 135 is being proposed. Does anybody have any questions on that budget? Seeing no questions? We will move on to Harbor Management, Department 136. Who will be speaking on behalf of the commission's behalf?
I will. This is where we find the pump-out boat, the $3,000 difference that we're asking Wellsco to pay for. We would give it to the harbor management, they would give it to Wellsco, then Wellsco would give it to the pump-out boat service being run by in conjunction with state of Connecticut and, yes, the fellow from Waterford with Save the River, Save the Hills. $3,000 reduction in that cost to the town taxpayers on that. And everything else is the same.
Does anybody have any questions for Mark on this particular? Does anybody have any questions for Mark on this particular budget? Any questions? Well, I guess I just have one question for clarification, Mark. The $3,000 deduction here in conjunction with the $2,250 cut brings the total to $5,250 that that burden will be added to Wellsco and taken away from the taxpayers? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for the first selectman on that budget? Hearing none, we'll move on to Conservation of Natural Resources, Department 138. Small budget.
Again, very, very simple budget. Not much difference. I think we took $100 off the agricultural subcommittee. They weren't spending it. And frankly, there's probably not a need to spend anything on that. I don't, I think they rarely meet. The Conservation Natural Resources Group does. They do a great job, and we have money there for a secretarial stuff for their meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on Department 138, Conservation of Natural Resources? Even if it's a question to understand, you know, the services they provide to the town? Anybody need that sort of clarification? Okay. Seeing nobody having any questions, we'll move on to Department 139, Historic Properties Commission. I do believe this is Barbara Low. Is she still with us? Yes.
Is here. This is Barb Johnson Low, Chair Historic Properties Commission. I first have to tell you, I don't have the detail in front of me that you folks all have in terms of all the, where every, every little line item is. So I will speak from my notes. And the Historic Properties Commission budget is comprised of two sections. The first is the Historic Properties Commission itself, and the second is the funding of the Samuel Smith properties. The budget was reduced to 3,500, which is last year's amount. This is unfortunate, just because this was the first year that we had any kind of a significant amount allocated to the budget, but we certainly understand, given the extraordinary circumstances that we're all living in right now. I'm going to approach this going from Samuel Smith up to Historic Properties. We appreciate the fact that the town is keeping the $10,000 allocated to be a match should the commission earn a grant. And to that end, we have been working with Gary Geshel in preparing a grant. We learned in that process that grants these days require real dollars and not in-kind services. So we were dead in the water without a real dollar number that we could promise as a match to any grant. So next Thursday, we are going to meet with Gary again. And we will, although we have been working on a $100,000 grant, you know, a $50,000 match was unrealistic. So we will now rework our grant application to provide a match for one of the three major urgent repairs needed for the properties. I think you have the backup data. We need to repair the roof. That's going to be $22,000, $23,000. We need to replace a carrying beam, which a year, year and a half ago was around $20,000. And then again, another $20,000 and change for a chimney. So we hope to be able to gain a grant and use the town's match to make one of those major repairs. So thank you for that. The additional $9,000, as I said, was reduced to 35. With regard to the Historic Property Commission activities, we're going to be like Brookside Farm. We will, as volunteers, will basically, will make it work. And we are not going to go forward with the research and documentation of historic houses, because that would require a lot of interaction. That's simply not human interaction. That's not going to be practical this year. So we will, with your, you know, permission, we will take that 3,500 and apply it 100% to one of the smaller and no less important repairs that were needed for the Samuel Smith properties that we were not going to be applying for grants for. So we're going to see, I talked to Ben Bullock, who is the Chair of the Friends of the Samuel Smith Farmstead earlier today. And the new, unfortunately, the new assessment of the engineering and repair of the barns, bowed and twisted carrying beams, is significantly higher than the $3,500 that he had estimated. But we will take that money and either, either apply it partially to that, see if we can get something done. Or if necessary and practical, maybe we will simply apply that money to the town's portion of a grant so that we could maybe get and get a match, you know, which would make that 3,500, 7,000. So I just wanted to let you know how we are going to approach things going forward. And that's really all I've got. The third thing that I would like to do to request on the record, though, is I would really like to hear from the Board of Finance and from the town, eventually the town selectmen. I'd like to make sure that, that the interest that has been generated and the acknowledgement of the commitment that has been made by the Samuel Smith Farmstead people will not go ignored next year. And I would like a commitment to the level of funding that we were initially offered this year, so that that can be a baseline for funding going forward.
Camille, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
I was saying, Barbara, that there are six commission members with possibly six different points of view. You know, personally, I wouldn't be able to make that guarantee to you, because there's no guarantee what next year's economy is going to be like. So I would say that you did have originally $9,000 in your budget. It was a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen to reduce that to 3,500. This board may or may not decide to accept that recommendation. We won't know until we deliberate on that. But again, I wish I could make a commitment to say, if we don't fund it this year, we'll do it next year. But not knowing what the economy holds, I just wouldn't be, I wouldn't hold myself to that promise. But what I did hear the first selectmen speak to at their May 6 meeting, I believe, was that there were over 1,000 people that signed a petition to save the Flowers House, was it? The one on Boston Post Road? And he had made a plea for anybody listening to donate to the Historic Commission property, because we do own properties already that need to be saved. So I don't imagine, or I shouldn't presuppose, have there any, have there been any donations made to your organization in that regard since that plea was made?
We had, I made that very comment to, to Mary Bykert of the day, and we actually have, we are, I'm integrating that into a press release, which is going to be going out soon. To our knowledge, no, there have been a few, there were a few phone calls. One challenge that exists, and this is something that's not really a Board of Finance issue, is that among our townspeople and among many of the people who actually signed the petition, with, with the name, the naming of our historic properties. So it would not surprise me if donation Eastline Historical Society, because that is the name people identify with Eastline. And there is no vehicle currently. There's no way that someone can make a donation, let's say, to go to the town website. And because Historic Properties is a town commission, we are not authorized to, to take any donations. We weren't even able to take a very sizable donation from Luanne Lang's family when she passed away. So that is, that's, that's a problem that we're going to have to address in another venue. But, but your point is well taken, and it would be, you know, we're going to do what we can to kind of build on that interest. But at this point, there is no website. There's no way that someone can go to, it's going to say, gee, yeah, let's, let's contribute to Historic Properties. You know, they have to, they have to dig around and find Brookside Farm or Samuel Smith Farmstead, you know, and then make donations to two separate entities, you know, and frankly, the Eastline Historical Society, so that it's very broken up.
Okay. So, so this is a question for Martin Mickerson, then. If somebody was inclined to write a check to the town of Eastline and suggesting that that payment be donated to one of these houses directly, do we have the ability to accept that donation?
No, that's not how it works. Now, Barbara, the, the old Sam, no, the old Smith Harris House had the Friends of Smith Harris. And that was a nonprofit group that would accept donations, correct?
That does, yes.
Yeah. Does Sam Smith, Samuel Smith House not have that vehicle? They don't have a Friends of Samuel Smith House?
It does have a Friends of Samuel Smith House, but neither of those have websites, have websites or ways to accept money through the town. So if the check went to the town, I'd like to know how they do that, too.
They can collect money. It's just that we don't have a, you guys haven't set up a website and a, and a means to do it. It's for the record, for the, for the new people, the Eastline Historical Society has nothing to do with Eastline. It is really the Thomas Lee House, which is a private entity. They accept a lot of money and all that, and they run their own house. And you'll see that there's not a Thomas Lee House budget in your book, because they run their own thing and have an endowment. So don't confuse, because I confuse all the time, Historical Society, Historic Properties. There are vehicles, there are ways that you could collect money. We really haven't implemented them. We haven't set it up, so it's an automatic thing. My suggestion on, to the Board of Selectmen, May 6th or whatever, knowing that nobody really listens to these meetings, but, but knowing that we probably have a campaign on our hands, that hopefully your group and with our help with the selectmen have all agreed to help you, that maybe we can kickstart something. There's a whole lot of clamor out there. There's a whole lot of whining out there when we lose a historic property in town. But we have one that's in desperate need, and nobody is stepping up to help. But we really haven't advertised how to help. And we have to probably tie that, tighten that up a little bit, Barbara.
I would ask Ian, Anna perhaps could answer this, because I have approached the town on several occasions, and Anna and I have had discussions. It is my understanding that, that this Historic Properties Commission cannot accept money and cannot set up a vehicle on the town website in order to do that. But if we can, I'm on it tomorrow.
No, not through the town, not to the town. You're going to do it through a nonprofit group like the Friends of groups.
So the Friends of the Historic Properties?
Well, Friends of the Samuel Smith House.
So you're talking. That's my question. Are you asking about, so you want this to be something for the one house and not Brookside Farm?
Well, you have a desperate need in, in the, in the Samuel Smith House. That's a house that's, that needs hundreds of thousands of dollars of work, where the town has committed to maintain the property of the, of the Smith Harris House and the Brookside Farm. You have a desperate need over on Plans Damn Road. I would think that would be where all the focus is going to go from your commission. Maybe not. Maybe not. Maybe, maybe not. But I, you do have a vehicle to do it through the separate Friends groups. And they do accept donations. So we could probably kick that into gear. And I know all six selectmen have, have agreed to make donations when solicited.
Camille, and Mark, I don't want to take, take over a finance meeting getting into this, but I will say that I will, I'd be happy to talk with you tomorrow about setting something up if all of the selectmen also agree that the Historic Properties Commission changes its format so that it no longer represents the town's historic properties, but only represents one historic property, because that is what would happen if, in fact, if we did things the way you were saying. I just, this is, if this is what the town wants.
I'm not speaking for the entire town. I'm just saying, we have an opportunity. There's probably money out there to start preserving the house that's falling over.
Right, 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 right. So here's, here's what we're going to do. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to ask Anna and Mark to research why we can't accept donations on behalf of the Historic Properties Commission. It's my understanding, if somebody wanted to write a check for $500 to, you know, and donate it to the town of Eastline, that you would find a use for it, and you can accept that. So I don't understand why we can't target a specific place where we want that to go. Maybe it can't be done. But let's just put that on a list of research.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Barbara. Does anybody have any questions for Barbara on either of those properties?
I do. Barbara, thank you. Let's see, your, the $2,000, which is in account 216 for service contracts, the research and documentation of historic houses and other properties for that period of time. Did I hear you correctly that you're thinking that this is not something that can take place at this time?
What I'm saying is, we talked as a commission and decided that, given the reduction in funds, that would be less of a priority than doing some urgent repairs, so that the barn doesn't fall down. You know, we'd rather work on the beam. Furthermore, that's the kind of work that would take place in the town hall, you know, and then going out and photographing and maybe talking to homeowners. So it might not be a wise thing to do this year. It would be something we could, we could postpone.
Okay. So it's, it's more, it's related more to the fact of the suggested cut by the Board of Selectmen than of and by itself being something because of COVID or something else that you felt like you couldn't do?
I guess what I'm saying is, a little bit of both. It would become less of a priority. It's something that, you know, that we could do, but it is going to require human interaction. It's also something very good for the town, and that, there was a significant amount of interest generated for that kind of activity as well through the Flowers House, you know, demolition process.
Great, thanks. Yeah, just to comment on the foregoing conversation, yeah, I'm sure we, there's a way to solve this issue. If there's, you know, donors out there, the proper vehicle, we can, we can discuss it at a different point and determine. But just a point that, you know, the, the house has tremendous historical significance. So, you know, and I would think too, you know, in the situation that we're all in at a time like this, too, I mean, the present's uncertain, the future's uncertain, but history, you know, grounds us. So, you know, thumbs up to your efforts, and I think we can find a way. And I may be over speaking, but I think we will. Thanks.
I have one more, just something that I thought I'd let the Board of Finance know with regard to the Samuel Smith Farmstead, and that is, in light of the COVID-19 needs, and particularly the needs for people right in our town, it's going back to its roots. The agricultural, agribusiness subcommittee of the Conservation Commission and the Farmstead and.
And um, Shoreline Soup Kitchen and Food Pantries are working together this summer. Samuel Smith has taken 21 of its garden plots. And it is, um, it's going to be gardening them and with volunteers. And all of the produce which will be generated from those garden plots will then be distributed through the Shoreline Soup Kitchen at St. John's Church on Main Street this summer. So that's a, I think that's a really nice statement about all of the commissions and about the generosity of the people of the town of East Line.
I think that's wonderful, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Okay, I do, I do think we should be moving on, we still have a, a long way to go here this evening, so thank you for your patience. And waiting to present, Barbara, and um, it pleases the board, we'll move on to uh, Department 418 Commission on Aging.
Hi Kathy. Good evening.
Hi Kathy.
Uh, Kathy Wilson, Senior Senate Director. So on my budget this year, the plan was to start the process of moving all the programs from general fund to our special revenue account. To get that um, into the, the existing fund to be similar to the Park and Rec Department where programs and their supplies would be generated and um, managed through the special revolving account. So you'll see that there's a $32,000 reduction from my program instructors, because that was all gonna get moved over. But we wanted to sort of soften that blow and so we put in a new line item of 8,000 to try to cushion as I'm moving through the next fiscal year to uh, put this into place. With where we are now, um, I, I'm not sure when we're even gonna be running programs, so at the moment, we had trips booked out through the summer, we refunded everybody for that. We had programs that I was hoping that come June, we could finish out that session. That doesn't look like that's gonna happen, so we'll be refunding those folks. And then we're gonna be trying to uh, come up with a plan to reopen this summer. What our sort of soft plan at this point is to get our transportation services uh, up and running with some sort of schedule, so we can schedule things without having to have a 20-minute conversation each time somebody calls in to figure out how we can do this. And then also, one of our big social service uh, uh, programs that we run is our tax aid program through the AARP Foundation. And we ended mid-March, we had 135 appointments still booked. They haven't been seen yet, and you know, obviously the IRS has sent out the, or extended out the, the date where people can file their, their returns. So we're, we're reaching out to our volunteers that were the tax counselors, hoping that we can get them in for June and get these appointments done, because it's something that we can schedule, we can control the number of people in and out of the building. It's much easier to clean a table after one client than to do it after, you know, you had some sort of big program, so. Uh, that's kind of where we're at right at the moment.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Kathy? On the Commission on Aging Department? Any questions for Kathy?
It's late.
It is late.
I did have one question, actually. Well, I had a couple, but you've, you've answered a couple of them actually, so. I did have one about the fleet management uh, program that you have, you know, where there's a, a monitoring system. So i- is that, is that statutorily required?
It's not statutorily required, but if the majority of our town vehicles have them and we don't have them and we're transporting people, I, I, I just feel like that that's a smart move on my department to have that in place.
Okay, all right.
Not that I ha- and let me be clear about something, I have, my drivers, I have complete confidence in them. However, there have been accidents in the past where people have hit us, so it's nice to have some of this stuff in place. But I got clear about, I have complete confidence in my drivers.
Okay. Just, and, and maybe just a general question, you can comment on this, I mean, there are definitely, you know, uh, departments within the town and I, for, for whom the, the landscape i- is going to change tremendously in terms of your programming, so. You know, can you comment for a moment on just the, you know, how you think you might reshape your programming and, and if it does have impact on the budget?
Um, so, I have, for the last, I would say, four weeks, I've sort of put my head in the sand, hoping that come June, things would start easing, things would get a little bit better and, you know, we'd be able to start having more foot traffic in the building. And with the realization after talking to other senior centers in the state of Connecticut, what's going on. And we're looking at online programming now and that, that's something new for me. As, as a senior center director, I'm a person-to-person person, I'm not a person-to-computer, you know. So um, I see instituting technology into how we're gonna program in the future. One of the things we're working with the Area Agency on Aging right now is to get tablets that we can loan out. For me personally, um, with my mother, we had to do telemedicine and we had not done that before. And I needed to sit with her, because she has an iPad, she doesn't know how to use it, you know, I mean, she just, it wasn't what she used. So that got me thinking about, well, there's, there's probably lots of folks out there that if they haven't seen their doctor, they should, and the only way they're going to is through telemedicine. So that was one way for us to start talking about getting tablets out on loan. And then the other way is to start, how can we, how can we program? Uh, you can do YouTube or, you know, Zoom or go to meetings and have a class. It's not quite the same, I don't know how I would pay my instructor, how I would collect fees. I, I haven't worked that out, but I, I see that coming. And whether it's a, a marriage of technology and in-person stuff, that's probably more likely than just all going online. But I, I see that happening um, sooner versus later.
So let's say in, in-person would be reduced number of participants in a class.
Exactly, exactly. Exactly. And that's one of the things we're doing right now, is we're measuring our activity space and doing like the six feet, you know, circumference around a person and what can we actually do? Um, in a, you know, if we have whatever, whatever room we're operating in, how many people can we actually put in there that makes sense? Do they move, you know, it's. You know, chairs, we have to clean them afterwards, are we cleaning all the?
So going, so going forward Kathy then, do you, do you think there's some significant, it's hard to tell, because you haven't developed the programs yet, but.
Right.
You know, can you foresee anything that's obvious to you in terms of programming change that directly affects your budget for 2021? More cost, less cost?
I'm, I'm thinking, there's probably gonna be some cost with, with online programming. Just from some initial stuff, the, the, the free Zoom cuts off at 40 minutes, not that it doesn't quite work. You know, we typically have an hour program, so I sort of see costs associated with that. You know, how, how do you work that cost into what you're charging? How do you, how do you have people pay for that if they're taking a class like this? I, 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 I don't exact, I mean, obviously it's done, colleges do it all the time. So obviously it's done, but just gotta wrap my head around it and, and, and figure it out.
Okay, well hopefully we'll have more clarity as we all go forward.
Well, and, and the, the senior centers in Connecticut, we're all, you know, we're doing Zoom meetings on a weekly basis, just trying to figure out, because while we're all very different looking, we all pretty much, when we start the day to the end of the day, we sort of done the same thing. How we've done it is different, but we've done the same thing, so we're all just trying to figure this out together.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Did you have a question Mitch?
Um, not, not really a question, but maybe a, a comment for you Kathy.
Sure.
The, the schools have gone through a tremendous um, set of innovations right now and changes in, in their whole paradigm. And I, I'm almost wondering if you may want to talk with, with Amy Drown over at the schools to see if there may be some ideas to help with the concepts beyond just working with the other senior centers. Uh, they're, they're implementing a, a whole series of programs for the kindergarten and first graders. It would be using iPads, and you bring up a very good point about the telemedicine. And also just the, the social contact with seniors, so important. That perhaps there, there are a lot of grants out there in places we may not have looked before. Uh, maybe within the, the healthcare arena. And maybe even a, a continuing education type thing.
And some of the.
Just learned out there.
And, and some of the questions are, um, will the older, maybe the older adult already has the technology, maybe they have the smartphone already, or maybe they can do it on their smart TV. Um, or maybe they don't have that piece of equipment and do they have the internet connection? And so, you know, there's that piece too of folks out in the community who potentially don't have the resources to access the technology and the connect, the connectivity. Yeah, but thank you, I will, so Amy Drown works for the?
She's the Assistant Superintendent. And it, it could also be a way to integrate the students with the elderly.
Yep, yep.
And because the, the students are just.
Yeah, they got, they got it all over us, Rich.
Okay. Any other uh, questions for Kathy from anyone? So I have two then Kathy, one question I ask every year, do you have a breakdown of the demographics of our town for us?
I do. Okay. Where's my, hold on a minute Camille, I have my presentation somewhere and I.
Okay.
Next, oh, here we are. So let's see. So of our current population, so what, 22% of our current population in town is over 65. And for the county, it's 16%, that's over 65, and for the state, the over 65 population is 15%. So we, we are a, a bit older as a community, a lot of that has to do with the active adult communities that we've built.
So from what I remember, that's pretty much level with last year.
It's, it, it creeps up a little, not, it's, there's not, it hasn't been a significant jump.
Right, so you could say almost one in four people are over the age of 65, which is a significant portion of our town population.
Correct.
Perhaps on a fixed income, okay. Uh, the other, the other question I had for you Kathy, and looking, I'm just looking at expense reports as of the end of March, that's the most recent reports that we have. And I noticed that one of, that your line item for admin, uh, Department 311. You've used, well, as of the end of March, less than 60% of the budget. So is there a vacant position there?
Yes, yes, there is, there is.
So is, is, is that something that is not necessary as a relate, uh, in regards to like what's going on with COVID-19 or?
Um, so what I would say is it, it has not been a deterrent currently, because uh, when we, we shut down, we're, we're not programming, so. Uh, but as we start to build back up, as we start to now look at alternate programming alternatives, or alternate programs, that, that will be something that we'll need to be able to really put that into place. Because I still have the social service work that I do, that, that hasn't gone down, that hasn't gone away. Um, but this now new piece of trying to program in a whole different world is, um, that's definitely gonna be a need. Um, I don't, you know, how are we gonna hire somebody, how are we going to interview anybody right now when we're in this sort of weird world? So I sort of resigned myself to, um, you know, I, I don't see that happening in the next few months, so I'm, I'm sort of there, uh, but I, I do feel that it's gonna be a position that we will definitely need, because it's, it's just, it, it's going to be a whole new world. And I, I need somebody that can jump on that.
We, we went out for the job, we posted for the job, we had great candidates for the job and we were just about to interview the panel for, for filling that position when COVID-19 hit, we, we put that on hold until this gets behind us. We have great people in line for this job.
So, so Kathy then, is it correct in saying that you're saying the need still exists, but you might not need them as of, or may not be able to hire them by July 1st of the new fiscal?
I, I think that's reasonable, I think that's reasonable Camille.
It could be a few months into the new fiscal year.
I, I think that's reasonable, and I sort of, I've already put my mind around that, so, but I, I think that's a reasonable assumption, yeah.
So, within that, within that Department 311, what would, what would, is that um, a full-time position, a part-time position? And how much are you, did you build into that department for the full-year salary?
So it's three full-time positions, my full-time bus driver, my full-time admin, and the full-time program coordinator.
So how much is the full-time program coordinator rate? I, I mean, you didn't hire them yet, so just arrange, or what did you build?
I, I have, I, I have it.
Okay. What did you build into the budget for that position?
It was 50 and some change, but let me, let me, uh. Okay, so the program coordinator, if they started as of July, was 53,779.
53,779.
Mm-hmm.
Good, right, thank you, that's, that's all the questions I have. Does anybody else have a question for Kathy? For Department 418 Commission on Aging? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you Kathy, you too. All right, so with that, we'll move on to Department Health and Welfare, which is different from government benefits.
That's the Visiting Nurses Association.
Yes.
They, they like, uh, the Ledlight Health District, based on population and number of calls to our town, et cetera. They perform a valuable service, invaluable service to our town and, and you see their budget requests in front of you.
Mark, I have a question on that department, is this an annual contract? Or do we pay per visit or per scheduled clinic? How does this work?
Anna could help us with that.
So there's different categories of services that they provide and we're billed monthly per number of hours for each of those services, so they do flu clinics, they do, they do some uh, senior center visits and they do home visits as well. I believe there's one other category that um, just doesn't come to my mind right now.
Blood, blood pressure clinics and health promotion activities at various community sites. But when I look at the budget detail through March, it looks like we've already spent the full amount, a lot of it, uh, the money is encumbered, which left me to believe that there's a PO that we're obligated to pay on a yearly basis, but what you just told me was that we get billed monthly and they bill us based on the number of hours. So how can we be sure, how can we be sure that um, we're actually gonna spend that money this year? Or is the visiting nurse actually still conducting these clinics? You see what I'm saying? 100% of the budget this year has already been expended, whether it was really paid or whether it was encumbered, 100% is gone. So.
It's a, it's an encumbrance, so we've paid out um, a little over 4,900 and there's about 4,400 remaining.
Right, so if we're paying per clinic or per visit and we get billed monthly based on the number of hours that gets provided. Do we overpay? I mean, are these clinics still taking place in this COVID environment?
Um, I can uh, touch base with Mary tomorrow and. I can touch base with Mary tomorrow and see if they're still conducting. I would expect they're probably doing some sort of the home visits.
Okay.
They're still caring for our seniors in this market and this, in this environment. And there's no doubt next year they'll be putting on flu clinics and blood pressure clinics for our seniors and for our town employees. They, they're the ones that provide the flu clinics for our town employees, which is only a benefit to our town.
Aren't the flu shots covered under, I mean, we're, we're in a new plan now for health insurance, we're not self-insured. Wouldn't that be covered by our insurance company now? Are we, are we paying for services that we could get elsewhere?
Well, they, it's not like they're, they're doing flu shots. If they, if they do the flu shots for, for us, then they would, they would bill the insurance company. But there's still the hourly fee for them to be at the clinic and that's what they would bill us for.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for that department. Anybody else? Seeing number of questions, we'll move on. To, we are up to the library, Department 420. Let's see who is with us.
Lisa's here. David Jacobs is here.
Yes, I, I can see Mark, I can see Mark, thank you.
Larry Fitzgerald, those are the three you want to bring in. Oh, John McCaris. Maybe Connie Sullivan, I don't know Connie, although I think she's part of the group as well.
Hi Lisa, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
I can, can you?
Yay.
Thanks, thanks for your patience, it's been a long evening.
No problem, thank you, it's a long night for all of you.
Okay, so we're up to 420, Culture and Recreation. This is the library budget, why don't you? We, we did have that special meeting that we called and so we got a very good education on the operations of the library and your specific needs. But for the public, why don't you just do a quick rundown of your budget?
Okay. I don't have a lot to report that's different this year. The only thing that we're increasing is a small amount for salaries and health insurance. We're otherwise flat. We can get by with almost what we had last year with just those two slight increases. I don't think you want me to walk through the whole budget, it's a few pages for the public, but I'd be happy to do that for the public some other time? Or do you really want me to go into a lot more detail?
Well, I guess maybe just some of the highlights. I noticed that the Board of Selectmen had a recommendation to reduce the salary increase for your people down to 2%. And I, and I don't know whether that was coming for you, from you as a, as an offering to help reduce?
That came from, yeah, that came from me as an offering. We, when I submitted the original budget, the salary increases were a bit high, I lowered them, they were above what the unions were getting, they're at 2.5%. We, I lowered it to 2%. So they're just below the unions now. Given that it's a tough year, we can go ahead and do that.
Am I correct in saying that?
We're nearly flat.
Yeah, am I correct in saying that last year though, you only had an increase of one and a half percent?
No, no, we, we matched most of the unions in town.
Okay. All right, I thought it was lower last year and maybe this was a makeup year. Okay.
No, no, no. This is, we're going to lower for, for this coming year a little bit, given the situation. We can go ahead and do that.
Okay. Does any, after, after the special meeting that we had and after diving into these numbers a little bit more, this is, this is one of the more significant departments in the general government town side of the budget. Do any of our members have any questions for Lisa this evening? Yes, Anne?
Just a Oh. Go ahead Anne, you go first. Go ahead.
So, sorry Anne.
No, no worries.
So my question is this, due to the COVID, I know the library's been closed, so do you have an increase or a decrease in, in your expenses or savings? Like, how has that affected the, the library?
We're not able to buy books right now, the, the companies that we work with that ship books stopped shipping in March because most of the libraries in the country have closed down, at least their in-person activities. Things like our copier, we're not getting money for our copier, obviously, but we're not spending money on books. So some things are up and some things are down. It's, it's give or take here and there. We do expect to buy books at some point in the next few weeks, but I have some elasticity with how much I'm going to spend on that, given the situation.
And do you also see an increase on the, like through Libbys or people doing it online, audiobooks?
Oh yes, our stats for, yeah, the online use skyrocketed the end of March and into April. We have quite a few people use, quite a few more people using that. And I did shift some of the physical book money over to eBooks so that we could supply more eBooks over the next few weeks. We've been making up, you know, our circulations in that area. We do expect to do curbside service by the end of this month. We are trying to figure out how to go ahead and have people contact us about books that they might want and make them available for takeout.
Okay. And then, I, I mean, I'm not sure if this is your area, but like, do you have any savings, like based upon like, like the heating or the electricity, the utilities for the library? Or is that not something that you are involved with? I'm just not sure.
We're not involved with that, no.
You're not?
No.
Got it. Yeah, because it's a town building. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. Hi.
Hi Lisa Santoro.
Thanks Camille. Hi Lisa, Anne Santoro here. I have just two, two questions. One, you had estimated that the contribution from the Library Foundation that you get annually for this year coming up would be $40,000, is that correct?
It's 44,000. It's comparable to what it was last year. The stock market over the past year didn't change a lot from the year before. We're expecting that to go down next year.
Right.
But for now, it's good.
Yeah, so I thought I had seen 40 in the documentation, but I can go back and check later. But I guess my question just is, so, yeah, with the ups and downs of the, of the last couple of months, well, actually the last two months, when, when is that number firmed up for you? You know, when does the foundation tell you, okay, this is it, we're giving you this for, starting, you know, July 1, next, the, the next fiscal year?
I got that number last week when our tax return was completed. It is 44,000 and change for next year.
Well, well, that's, that's very happy news for you, I'm sure, because
Yes, oh yes. The foundation is a wonderful thing.
That's great. Okay, that's good. And then my other question, your, the program budget number was at about $9,000. So, do you, so, you know, the similar question that I asked of Kathy over, you know, in senior center, but do you anticipate program changes that would make that number increase or decrease for this next year? Would it have any kind of an impact on the budget?
Yeah, at least for the summer, we're holding off, we have the contracts for our summer programs ready, but we don't anticipate sending them out. We think that we're probably not going to be able to do those programs this summer. What we are doing is expanding our homebound delivery system, we're working on that right now too. Normally, you don't get homebound delivery unless you're completely unable to leave the house and you don't have a family member who can, who can get books or items from the library for you. We're going to expand that out to anyone who's immunocompromised, who's not going to be able to come out until there's a vaccine. So we anticipate some program costs in that sense, that we're, we're expanding that part of our services, but we don't anticipate having many programs over the summer.
Okay.
We're hoping to have them for the fall, we are, we are trying to gear up for the fall. We will try to do some sort of online reading program in the summer for kids. And we may have some programming, but we still don't know what that'll look like.
Okay. That's great. That's basically all I had, I just wanted to say that, you know, the operational, you know, your, your, your operational tour that, that we all, you know, took, you know, answered, you know, 99% or I think of our questions, so, so that's it really does help to not only hear it, but, but see it all, you know, so that was very
Yeah, I wanted to thank you all for coming to that, I think, I think we all got a lot out of that. Seems like it was a million years ago now. But another lifetime ago, but it was helpful to have all of you there that night and I wanted to thank you for giving the library that time to do that.
Thanks, that's all I had.
Yeah.
Thanks.
We anticipate being very busy next year. When the economy takes a downturn, the library gets very busy. So we anticipate a very busy year coming up.
Okay, I think, Rich, did you have a question?
Yes Lisa, I was wondering in terms of, of revenue, do you expect a major drop in terms of, of the fund drive? And then I know that when we did our tour, you had mentioned about the book sales that go on. Is that a significant revenue source for you all?
Our, our annual fund drive did pretty much stop with the exception of one very large donation in memory of one of our volunteers who we lost. But otherwise, we haven't had much coming in. And we haven't been doing any used book sale because we don't have any, any population in the library. We're hoping to at some point start that, but I don't see that happening anytime before the end of the summer either. So those revenues are down.
So would that be about maybe 20, 25,000 dollars in lost revenue?
Not that much, no. I don't have the number in front of me of how much we've taken in for the annual fund drive, but it'll be a few thousand less than it normally would be. Most of our money does come in before March. So it, you know, we did get the, the bulk of the annual fund drive, we just didn't get the last quarter of it, that's going to be missing. We are already gearing up for this summer's fund drive, where we've put together the mailer and we're, we're getting that ready to mail out so that we can ask for donations again.
Okay, thank you.
We're also going to have the Story Walk at Bridewbrook installed this week, which is something that people can do outdoors, socially distancing with kids, that'll promote both literacy and healthy activity outside. So the new Story Walk that was supposed to be up in April will be implement, you know, will be put into place this Wednesday. We're waiting till it's in before we announce it to the public, although I guess we just did, huh?
You just did.
Sorry.
Okay. Any other questions for Lisa this evening?
I do.
Yes, John.
Under the materials, the last four item codes, the total were all for us, but I'm going to say sometime, somewhere between 11 and 12,000 dollars.
Yep, the materials.
Right. And the last four items, are there any possibilities of the realized reductions in any of those light items?
You mean the serials and periodicals, AV materials?
Right, the last four. And especially the last one, which went up about $3,000, the programs.
Right, that's we're not, again, we're not sure what programming is going to look like. We may save some money, but it, again, it may get diverted to homebound delivery. We may re-divert some of our part-time staff into delivering books to those who can't get to the library this year. Normally, that's done with volunteers who are retired and we don't want to use those volunteers to deliver the books, so we're going to, we're going to re-divert some of that programming money to, to have that service instead.
Okay. Thank you.
Lisa, I, I just had one additional question for you this evening when I was, when I was looking at the detail of the budget. I'm looking at the health insurance line item. Now, the health insurance for the library employees, they're part of the town's plan, correct?
Yes, we are.
So the increase to the health insurance, I believe, was adjusted downward to four and a half percent for other departments, but I don't see that it was downwardly adjusted for yours. You're still at 9% versus the
Yeah, we're still at 9% and, and we thought it, I hadn't heard that it was adjusted down. Last I heard, it was still 9%.
Anna Johnson?
Yeah, I'll take a look at that before the meeting on Wednesday.
Okay.
The, the health insurance, and I'm going to take a look at the, the town retirement as well to make sure that, you know, because those are two important items.
Right. You, you guys said those. I seem to recall that the retirement was much higher this year than it has been in the past. We did pay that this year and it was significantly more than the 44,000 that came in for budget year 19. So yeah, I think it would be best if Anna Johnson rechecked those numbers. And if she has any questions, I can, I can work with her on those tomorrow.
Okay. I bring that up because that, I mean, first, first of all, I just appreciate your bringing in a pretty flat budget, it's very responsible budget, but that, that would be one item that we could potentially squeeze another, I think, 9,900 bucks out of.
Yeah, if the, yeah, if you, if you're telling us that it's only going to go up four and a half percent, we can budget that. Last I was told it was nine and I never heard anything differently.
Right, okay, so I'll, I'll have
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can work with you on that.
Terrific, okay, great. That's all the questions I had for Culture. Anybody else have any questions while Lisa's on the line?
Okay, thank you Lisa.
Okay, thank you, thank you all, I appreciate it.
To all your cohorts that were listening patiently as attending.
Yes, they're wonderful, they're really good.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Now, we will move on to Parks and Rec. Looks like Dave, David Putnam's call, this is Department 421.
I am, good evening. My name's Dave Putnam, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. And I have the budget that was presented originally to the Board of Selectmen had a 2.81% increase and they have, their recommended cut was approximately $8,000 to my park and field maintenance account. And a lot of that was based on, in my, putting the budget together back in December, we had put monies in there to potentially spray for triple E mosquitoes in the fall if we needed to do that. And so that's where most of that cut came from, from the Board of Selectmen. We have got some feedback from Ledge Light a little bit on that and how effective that would be and we are concerned that it might not be worth that, to do that if we do get into a triple E situation again in the fall, which we are concerned about and need to keep an eye on as, as we move forward. So other than that, mostly other increases are contractually raises as far as the operating budget is concerned. So, you know, if you had any questions on the operating budget, but that's pretty much where we're at.
Just one question, Dave. On 412, part-time seasonal labor. With what's going on, do you expect that number to hold?
Yeah, we
$8,000?
Sure, John, we, because of the grass is growing like crazy now, we just put our seasonal guys on, actually yesterday, I mean, excuse me, today. So I would imagine that that's going to stay the same. That line item would stay. Is that, is, is that your question?
More or less, how much of that has to do with the beaches? Does that come out of a separate account?
Yeah, no, that comes out of a separate account. I mean, there are some over, overflow on that as far as some of those guys do clean garbage cans in the morning or open it up and groom the beaches and stuff, and that's not found in the Beach Enterprise Fund, that is in this part-time seasonal labor account.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions for Dave Putnam?
I, I have one, Dave, a couple, but we'll leave this one for now. The, the sales tax on municipal parking lots? So, are we, have we, in your calculations, have you added that already to, you know, for the beach passes or?
So are we, have we, in your calculations, have you added that already to, you know, for the beach passes or?
No, we had discussions with that, with, uh, the Department of Revenue Services, and since we are not a, we're an entry fee, that we weren't, we were not, um, required to pay the sales tax because it's an entry fee and not a parking fee. So what we, what we did is, is it's a beach parking entry fee is what we charge. Uh, and, and so that was brought up and I had checked in with Department of Revenue Services and we've not, we are not required to pay that sales tax.
Well, well, that's a, that's a good piece of news for.
Absolutely, because we had put a lot of work together on how we were going to handle that six and a half percent increase and what those fees would look like. And, and so, um, that was nice to, to get that determination from, uh, Department of Revenue Services. That was, in, in which I think is the right thing. I think we're not a parking lot. We are an entry, we are entry fee based for our, uh, facilities and that works, you know, especially with the boardwalk and the boardwalk being done with federal monies and that's an open uh, place for them, for people to come and, and if you're going to park there, you're going to go to the boardwalk. If you're going to enter the beach, you need a separate pass. And so, um, that's kind of how we worked on, uh, it presented that to the Department of Revenue Services.
That's great. I, I agree. Thanks. Thanks on that. And then, um, there's a line item, uh, three-three-five on materials and it's up three percent. And, um, I was just wondering if you could comment on that a bit.
Sure, that's a, most of the materials that we purchase are for the athletic field, so that would be an increase in the fertilizer fees that we put down and, uh, the stuff that we treat the fields of fertilized grass seed, uh, infield material, those types of things that we expected to, uh, go up a little bit, uh, for the next fiscal year.
Okay. That's all I have for the moment. Thanks.
I have one more question, Dave.
Sure, John.
On the Beach Enterprise Fund.
Mm-hmm.
Seeing what's happening as far as the governor and whether he's going to open the beaches, fifty percent or a hundred percent, what, what are your projections as far as loss of revenue?
Yeah, we're going to lose, my projection is because the, my commission has, uh, has made a determination that, uh, for this year, based on capacity and concerns regarding social distancing, that it will be for residents only for this summer. So we, we're looking at losing per, almost forty-five percent of our revenue um, based on that. That's a big hit. And so then that becomes a situation where we got to manage that as far as our staffing concerns are concerned. And, and then, so that we're in that situation where we need to, um, you know, we need to cover our expenses with our revenues. And that was kind of the deal that we made up with. We did have a very good summer last year and we had a balance in that fund of about between twelve and fourteen thousand dollars. So that does help us move forward into this year and it is going to be a significant reduction in our revenue. And there's no way around it unless restrictions are lifted. If they are lifted, then I think my commission would go back and look at, um, reinstituting the uh, non-resident fees it to some level. And, and what that looks like could change tomorrow, could change mid-June, could change mid-July. I think we need to be fluid with that. Um, that's, um, something that we, we're going to have to look on and monitor as the year goes on. That's going to be a management issue for our department is how do we balance those expenses in that loss in revenue? And so we're looking at, uh, right now, just, you know, preliminarily, do we lifeguard all the beaches? Do we not lifeguard a couple beaches? Do we save some monies in our lifeguard? In our lifeguard line item, uh, do we reduce the hours of our gate attendance? But then we also run into that thing that we do need people to monitor. We want to keep the beaches open, so we are going to need staff to monitor how people are doing their social distancing. And, uh, and we're going to have to monitor when we may have to close parking or limit parking. Um, I wish I had numbers. It's, it's, you know, what that looks like if a full parking lot at McCook can still, um, the beach still look like people are doing their social distancing and doing that is something that we're going to have to look at. So it is a huge concern in that Beach Enterprise Fund. It's, uh, it's going to be a, a challenge this summer for sure.
So, so you can lose forty percent of that, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we're going to close to a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, so we're running eighty.
That's a lot of lifeguards.
A lot of lifeguards, a lot of gate attendance, a lot of, uh, looking at how we can, um, you know, how we can look to cut expenses. So I, I think it is nice that we do have, um, a little bit of, we had a really good summer last summer with attendance and revenues. And so we do have that to carry it over into this year. So, um, that's, you know, one positive.
No, I forget, did they, as far as increasing fees, is that going to affect this year?
Yeah, so we did, yeah, so we did increase the non-resident fee. Unfortunately, you know, when we set those in December, we didn't know um, what the situation was going to be like for this summer. And, uh, so we did look to increase some of those fees. We did, uh, moderately increase. The senior fee had not gone up since two thousand and eight. Um, so that went from fifteen to twenty dollars. Uh, so that's our increase in some of our fees for, for this year so far.
That's, when I become a senior, you increased it. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, no problem. Dave?
And, and Chikalo, I think you, do you have a question?
I do. So just a quick question regarding the Park and Rec, the summer programs for the kids. I'm assume, I mean, I don't know, are they going to go forward? And then are there any like savings if they go forward or don't go forward? Or like, how is that going to play out?
Right. So we're, we're looking at, uh, we're going to take the lead from the school system, I think, a little bit. If they decide to have summer school, um, then that might, we, we run our big playground program, which is about a hundred thousand dollars a year, and that is a break-even program. Um, so with that, if we, and it's really difficult, the, the governor has mentioned camps can be open as of June twenty-ninth. But there are restrictions, pretty significant restrictions to that in that groups of ten, no more than thirty without a waiver. Every kid has to be, uh, you know, temperature tested before they come in to the camp. So there's a huge amount of restrictions that I, I don't feel comfortable that my staff, even though we do a great job, we have college and high school kids that are, that are doing this. And I, I don't know if I want to put those kids at risk. And then I'm not sure how many parents are going to want to send their kids to camp as it is for this summer. So, um, that's things that we're looking at right now and, and so we got to do that now. Look at that. Now, your question about lost revenues and stuff, since it is a break-even program, if we don't run it, we're not going to, we're not going to lose any money. We're not going to make any money. So that's a, you know, all of our programs are set up that way in our special revenue fund. So if we don't run a program, we're not losing money or, um, or, or, you know, it is, everything is on a break-even basis. So.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. But it's going to be a difficult summer. Uh, you know, we don't know where camps are going to go and, uh, you know, the governor hopefully comes out with some more guidelines for us. And like I said, we're going to be driven by, uh, kind of what the schools do with their summer school and stuff. So we, we rely heavily on the school system for our facility, uh, for our facilities during the summer.
Has the governor said anything yet about camps for the summer?
Sure, yes. You can have summer camps, but there's limited to ten per group, max of thirty per site. Our playground program, to be explicit, we had three-hundred-and-twenty-seven kids in our playground program last summer.
Yeah.
How do we? How do we reduce it to the thirty kids? And we've talked about doing maybe just a camp for, um, parents that are essential workers, um, nurses and that kind of thing, and if they need a camp. So something kind of we're looking at. It's just really difficult, um, with the restrictions. Uh, and I don't know if they'll be in, you know, if we will have those in place, you know, by those times. And then, you know, if, if a child or a staff member were to, uh, test positive for COVID-nineteen during this, you know, we'd have to have certain protocols in place, um, to move forward. And, um, it's a little scary and, and a little bit. I think I, I need to, um, I think our department needs to err on the side of caution as far as that is concerning and kind of maybe see what school looks like when it rolls out in September or late August, whenever they go back to school and and see how that, uh, how that works out. So.
Yeah.
I hope that answered your question.
No, definitely did. I, I think it could be burdensome, you know, for trying to manage all the kids and, you know, trying to teach kids to social distance even. I mean, I think that's difficult, you know?
Right. How do you, a first grader that sees their friend in another group and they can't go into that group is, is going to be really difficult. And then if they do mix, I, I don't know what that protocol then looks like. So.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
So, Dave, back to the beaches.
Yep.
If the legal issues are, are questioned and brought up because of precedent, um, in the past, are, are we just expecting that any actions would kind of go beyond the, the timeframe of when you're planning to have the beaches open?
It could be. I, I think we need to look at that too and see if there's a way to, to manage that somehow. And I don't know what that looks like. Uh, Rich, it's really, and, and we're on, I think everybody has said, everybody's trying for answers. Like, I know Kathy's Commission on Asian Group meets. We meet weekly on a Zoom meeting as well. And, and some other towns are doing the same thing we're doing. Some other towns are limiting their capacities by cutting out parking in half. So if, if we're challenged on it and we're required to, um, move away from that and do a non-resident, maybe it becomes where we offer, um, twenty non-resident passes per day. And once those passes are used up, uh, you know, then the rest is, is, is for our residents. So there's got to be a, you know, maybe there's a happy medium or, or somewhere where we're accommodating it. We, you know, we talked about two of the three beaches maybe being resident and the other non-res. I mean, there's a whole bunch of unanswered questions that really are, are concerning to not only me, but the Park and Rec world. To be honest with you, especially with the summer beaches coming up in all the shoreline communities. I know some of, like I said, some have gone to, you know, resident only, some are limiting, uh, capacity, some are, um, closing totally. So it's, uh, it's, wish I had better answers. It, it's been a, it's been a challenging spring. It really has.
It's very challenging. And, um, a, a, another aspect is do you, do you anticipate that the sale of seasonal will be lower than, lower than years past?
What's that?
Do you expect that the season pass sales for residents may be lower due to residential?
I, I think, Rich, I think that my, my opinion is they're going to go up because I think some of our residents, regardless of what the law, didn't like the law. And, and so we're frustrated. I think that, you know, we, we had to sell, sell non-residents. I think, I think we're going to see an uptick in that. We started selling beach passes today. We sold over two-hundred beach passes today. And, and so to me, that's, and all residents is, to me, that was a great indication that, um, that I think we're resident-wise, we're going to be up, but we're going to lose that whole revenue of non-resident, you know, that whole. So this summer's going to look a whole, a whole lot different than any previous summer. Um, you know, that, from a management standpoint, how are we going to handle that?
Oh, okay.
But I think our resident numbers are going to go up. That's, that's my own personal opinion. Um, I, I, I would, that, that's just what I'm, I'm thinking. And maybe people aren't going to be traveling to other destinations. They want to stay home and, and they're going to take advantage of using, uh, using the beaches.
Okay. And then last question, um, for the attendance, do you think there's going to be a need to have police presence with the attendance?
Absolutely. So in our budget, in the, uh, in the special, uh, Beach Enterprise Fund, I do carry, uh, I had, and we do have, for the last two years, we have a police officer on duty with us every weekend day. So, um, so I, I would, that, that would stay. Um, we started, actually, we were thinking, um, make, uh, the first weekend in May, we did start with, uh, not attendance more than just having staff there and a police officer on duty to help us monitor with social, social distancing. So on weekends, on July fourth, we already have it in the budget for security that we do hire a police officer to be on site.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions for Dave?
I just want to thank Dave. I think, um, I'm a frequent user of the boardwalk. There's been a lot, a lot of people down there. I think it's been managed very well in this thing. And I agree with you. I, I think the resident use is going to go way up this summer because there isn't anywhere to go.
Right, right. Yeah, and, and people have been really, and, and from what we've noticed, I would say ninety-five percent of the people are adhering to the social distancing, adhering to the one-way boardwalk. Um, so if we can keep that going this summer, I'm optimistic that we can keep the beaches open and be able to manage them. And, and you know, if restrictions are eased up and then, you know, that's absolutely going to help us, uh, tremendously. If they stay where they're at, we'll do our best to manage it. It, it's been real difficult to close even a basketball court for, you know, I've been in the profession thirty-three years. We've been trying to get people together for thirty-three years to, to create memories. And now we're telling people to stay apart. It's really difficult. It, it's, like I said, it's been a very challenging spring. So.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Peter.
One, one last question, um, Dave. Utilities, electricity, that line item, which is, uh, uh, account two-ten.
Right.
It's seventeen thousand five hundred. Um, and the selectman had already so, you know, cut, this was independent of suggested cuts, but the actual cut was two thousand five hundred. So and it, in the narrative, it describes, um, utility costs for certain park locations. So do you think, given, um, you know, given the situation going forward, that, that you still need to use lights there in the way that this was initially thought about? Or would that change?
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think, I feel comfortable with the seventeen-five figure there. The twenty thousand, to be honest with you, I think that was a mistake on my part from day one. Uh, and I'm glad the Board of Selectmen, you know, that they picked up on that. And so I, I feel comfortable with that. Um, just, you know, we've picked up some park areas and, you know, electricity costs. And it's hard to look out sixteen months, uh, when we do the budget, but, uh, I, I feel comfortable with that seventeen-five and, and and that original twenty thousand dollars was a mistake on my part when, when I initially submitted the budget.
Okay. So, um, would this include lights, for example, around the track at the high school? Like for, no?
Yeah, no, that's not my, that would come out of the, the Board of Ed's budget. Right.
Okay.
Correct. This is for electricity charges for, um, like at Bridgewater.
Right.
Except for lights at, uh, some of the other park locations.
Yeah, I think it was, uh, Veterans Memorial Park, Town Park on Penn, Maine, and, and Paradise Park, right?
Right, correct.
Okay. Well, thanks. And thanks for reminding me. Yeah, that's a different, uh, yeah, that's a different situation with, with those lights there.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, you're welcome.
Okay, Dave, I just wanted to, um, talk a little bit about the, the Miracle Field. I know you've been working very hard. A lot of people have been working very hard on the Miracle Field. I haven't had a chance to go over and see it. Haven't loved that house much, but, you know, congratulations. I mean, it's finally coming to fruition. It's going to be here. It's a great addition to our town. I know there was a lot of hard work involved, so thank you for that. And, um, but I, I do have just a, a question about the, the maintenance of the field. And how does that work? Are we in a co-op with other municipalities for the maintenance of that field? I don't see anything in your budget that includes maintenance for that particular field. I, I don't understand how the upkeep is going to.
Right. So the, so the field is a turf field, so there won't be any cutting or lining of it. So it's a synthetic turf surfacing. So it's not like we have to go up there on a daily basis and maintain it. My thought was, when my group, my crew, and, and I'm hoping that I get some assistance from the Board of Ed. And so I'm, I'm going to put my Miracle League hat on for a minute here. Um, that, you know, with, there's garbage out there and there's custodians already out there at school. The Miracle League's donating six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar, um, project to the school for their use that their custodians could go out and do a garbage pickup for us after a busy Sunday. Or, uh, you know, our volunteers can certainly bag that on a Sunday and stuff. I would imagine that the, um, the maintenance cost of it's going to be very minimal because it is a turf surface. So it's not, we don't have to, like I said, we don't have to cut it. We don't have to line it. Um, you know, we might have to blow it off and pick up leaves in the fall. Um, but it, I, I can't imagine that there'd be a significant increase in, in the amount of maintenance hours that's going to go into that. The grasses surrounding that are already, the natural grass that surrounds that will be cut by the Board of Ed. It's on their property. They were cutting it before we put in that field. In fact, we've taken quite a bit of field away from them that they'll have to cut. So, um, I hope that answers your question. We don't have restrooms there right now. That is phase two of the project. Um, the Miracle League is going to pay for, uh, and no one loves porta-potties, but so we can get the field up and operate. The Miracle League is going to pay for, and no one loves porta potties, but so we can get the field up and operational, there'll be porta potties there, and that'll be paid for by the Miracle League. That won't be paid for by the, by any town monies. And that's the goal of this whole thing with the Miracle League is that we didn't want it, you know, we didn't want it to be a burden to the taxpayer. And so that's why all the monies were privately raised. There's no taxpayer monies that went into that as far as the construction is at. And we hope that the running of it, too, will stay the same. We'll continue with our fundraisers. As we move forward, there's some, two very successful fundraisers that we run, the Nyanik Bay Oyster Fest, where all the proceeds from that go to that. And then we have our, we have our Holiday Gala, which, you know, the last two years, we've averaged $80,000 raised at the Holiday Gala that's held at the Mohegan Sun each year. So, so I don't see that. I, that's why I don't put anything in the budget there. If I have to, my guys go up to Darryl Pond to empty garbage, and they have to run back and swing through Flanders School for, you know, a few garbage cans. It's maybe 10 or 15 minutes, and then they're out of there once a week. The school will use it for recess and for their PE classes, so it'll be available for them. So I'm hoping we can certainly work, I would think they would work with us to help, you know, take care of a little bit of garbage, maybe, and work on, you know, as far as that is concerned. So does that answer your question, Camille? I hope so.
No, for, for a large degree. I mean, I, I know that the Miracle League and your fundraising efforts have really covered all of, you know, the installation of this. But what about in terms of liability insurance, since it's on our town property? If somebody were to get hurt, do we need to have increased coverage for that?
So we have a, we have a, yeah.
And then just one more thing, in addition to the liability insurance, do we need to have medical support people there while activities or games are being conducted?
So, so let me get back to the first question is, we have a memorandum of understanding with the school. Is that once the field is built, the Miracle League will, will turn over, will donate that field to the, to the town. So it would be just like one of our other fields. It's no different than the turf field at the high school. So the Miracle League's not going to own it. The town's going to own that field. So.
Does that mean when the turf needs to be replaced, that?
The Miracle League will replace it. No, we're going to continue to do the fundraising for that. So the Miracle League, Miracle League side of it, the Board of Directors, isn't going away after this is, after this is completed. And we have those two very successful fundraisers that have, like I said, if we can raise $100,000 a year, the carp, I can tell you the cost of the carpet was $138,000 for this, in this project. So it is a seven-year warranty. After 12 years, intent is, and the, the Miracle League is to fund that, that it wouldn't be funded. We don't want to come to the town for any funding for that. As far as your medical concern is concerned, it's no different, because it's adaptive sports, no different than any other sporting activity that goes on as far as Little League is concerned, as far as PBU football, any of those types of things, it's no different. So, I mean, we're running programs now. I mean, we do our I can bike program, kids with disabilities. We do our basketball program. We do our kayaking program, do all those other programs. There's no, you know, we'll have additional staff on, but we don't have any, there's no need to have additional medical people there.
So we don't have riders on our insurance policy to cover those events?
I would think it's covered under our, because it's a cosponsored with Park and Rec and the Miracle League, that it's a, it's covered under our own insurance policy. I mean, I certainly can look into that, but I don't see it being any different than our volleyball program or our aerobics program or our dance program. We did an adaptive dance program. So I don't see that being any different, but I can certainly look into that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been one of the good things with this is, with school being out of, with school being out, the construction, you know, with construction companies being able to continue to work, we're probably, you know, at least three weeks ahead of schedule that turf's all done. We're probably 90% done with the project. Bleachers were put in today. The fencing for around the fence, around the facility, the scoreboard, a flagpole, that's it. And then we're, we're good to go and we're good to turn it over to Flanders School and to the town. That's been a great project. It's been really exciting. I can't, you know, the community's been so supportive and so, you know, behind this project. It's been great. It's really been, you know, I think, and I think a lot of people like the fact that, you know, we didn't use any taxpayer money to, to build the facility.
It's remarkable. Great job. I mean, really, on everybody's part. Thank you. Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Dave this evening on Parks and Rec? Okay, I don't see any. Well, thanks for your patience.
Good night, thank you.
Thanks. Good night. What are we up to here, people? Debt service, 522. You know, before we get to debt, I mean, I do want to circle back to this registrar's. We do have to cover that somehow. So I don't imagine we ever got one of the registrars to call in at any time. I think Mark is going to text them or follow up.
Nobody followed up. I wasn't, I wasn't able to get Barbara on the phone.
Okay, so we will cover it.
We do it.
We will, we'll do it. We'll, we'll just put that at the end still, then. Okay, let's move on to debt service interest, 522. Anna?
Yes, okay. So Departments 522 and 523 are for debt service. The first, the first one is the interest. And in the narrative, for the, the budget accounts are all defined by the year that we did the debt issuance. And so in the backup, it describes what the issue was for and what the maturity will be. So the new items that weren't in the budget last year, we did a refunding in 2019. And then also included is a 20 new, a new bond. So what the new bond would consist of is $10 million for the elementary school project as well as we had planned to do about an issue of new debt for about $3.8 million. And that's what, what that consists of, $3.8 million for CIP projects. And the principal, they're all set up to coincide with, with the same accounts as the interest does. So, I mean, that kind of simplifies it. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Anna on this particular department? Debt service interest on debt? Anna, I, I had a question. The, we learned from the Board of Education the other evening that the $37.5 million project for the elementary schools was going to come in about $400,000 under budget, for which we did not need a bond. Are those savings and interest reflected in these budget numbers?
So that, so.
This further to account for that?
Yeah, so it, it wouldn't be one time, because as you call, when we were talking about this particular issue, we were going to take on the debt in phases. We weren't going to bond the entire $37.5 million. So that last portion, when we do the final issuance, which will be next year, but for, like, whatever's left that it costs for the project, it would be taken into account at that point in time. So what we do when we, when we issue debt, first, we start with short-term notes, which are a one-year maturity. So every August is when we typically go to market. And at that point in time, we do, we do a combination of notes and bonds. So the notes are what we do for short, for short-term. Like, for example, last year, we did $18,000, $18,45,000 in short-term notes. We're going to bond 10 million of it. And then we're going to issue notes on $8,45,000 again for next year. And so it's only at the end that all of that comes into play.
Okay. And we had a conversation recently, what's the term that you use for refinancing?
Refunding.
Refunding. And the last time that, that you did that with the treasurer was when?
We actually had one, we did one last year.
Last year?
Right.
But you, but you recently revisited, right, because the interest rates have plummeted. The cost of borrowing has plummeted. So didn't you recently try to estimate whether the cost of a refunding?
Yeah, so what, what we did is, at one of the last Board of Selectment meetings, they, they passed a resolution authorizing us to do up to a $13 million refunding issue. Because in order to do a refunding, a resolution is required by the Board of Selectment only. And so the plan right now is, when we go to market in August, we would do a refunding at that point in time. There are two pieces to the refunding. We have what we call a callable portion, and then there's an advanced refunding. So the callable portion is, we would do those on tax-exempt bonds. The advanced refunding, because we're doing it a little earlier than the call date that's in the original issue, is accord, the, the new tax code that was issued two years ago says that those have to be taxable bonds. The, the market for taxable bonds currently is, is not, is not very good. So by holding off until August, maybe it'll change at that point in time. Otherwise, we'll just do the callable portion. And it, it makes sense to do it at that point in time because we'll be doing, we'll be financing other items. Like, we'll be permanently bonding another $10 million for the elementary schools. And, you know, perhaps doing some new notes this year so that it, it makes sense because you'll be allocating the cost of the total issue out over the different segments of the debt that we'll be issuing.
So the $297,000 for the new general obligation bond for the schools, that, that's how many million dollars?
That's, that's.
That's based on what in, like, what interest rate?
Um, I think the, the current market rate is less than 3%.
Well, right, but this budget was done months ago. So what was the interest rate that you used to come up with? $297,000.
It was a 4.25%.
Okay, so I'm thinking that we can borrow that $10 million at a significantly lower rate than 4.25%. Would you agree?
Well, that's, it, it appears to be so, yes.
So is it possible that we could reduce that number this year?
We can take.
In this budget? Let's, let's take a look at that. Let's, let's say even if we could get a 2% interest rate, how would that, how would that affect that $297,000?
Well, we're looking at under 3%. So I, going to 2%, I think, may be too low.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I, I said the, the current market rate for a credit quality like the town of East Line is, is like under 3%. 2% may be too low.
Okay, somewhere between 2 and 3. It, it's going to be a lot less than 4 and 1/4. So I, I would, I would really appreciate, maybe if you could come up with a recommendation for the Board of Finance of how much we could reduce that number by.
Okay.
And that is the only question I have on debt service. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns for Department 522? Any other questions? Okay, then, let's move on to the next department, debt service principal. What a high-level overview of that department, Anna.
Well, I kind of thought I was talking about both the principal and interest at, at the same time. So this is the principal that goes with the interest in the prior department. Because if you look at all the different budget accounts, like 633 is for the 2010 refunding bond issue, and it's the same in the interest. So that's the principal that's due on the various issues.
So, so this account pretty much can't be changed. I mean, we, this is the number that, this is our obligation. This is what we have to pay back based on instruments that are currently in place. There's, really, this is the number that we have to go with. Otherwise, we'd be in default, correct?
That's, that's correct, yes.
And just wanted to make sure all the other members understood that, about that particular department.
You don't ever want to disclose that you've been in default of a bond payment.
Right, right.
Because that stays with you, like, forever.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions on debt service principal, capital might take a little bit. Let's just quickly go, let's just quickly loop back to the registrars. Want to make sure we don't miss that tonight. That's Department 110. So we don't have one of the registrars on the call this evening to discuss the budget. My understanding is that the primary this year has been postponed until August. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Anna, please, or if I don't understand this correctly. The $25,000 in Department 110 account, 500-402 referendum primary of $25,000 will not be spent this year because we're not having the primary this year. So this budget would be under budget by at least 25,000. Now, am I saying this right? Now, what am I saying?
I'm following you.
I believe that'd be 22.5 rather than the 25.
Why do we have, what? Why did we have 25,000 for the, oh, because it was a referendum. Let's, oh, let me go back. Anna, I think you should walk us through this because I.
I think what you would, I think what you were referring to, Camille, is what's in the current year's budget?
Well, the $22,500 in the current year budget. Oh, oh, of course. Oh, yeah, the $22,500 would be for the primary this year. That's not going to happen. So that has to be added to the 25,000, which is actually for the general election in November. So you've got the primary in August now, and the general, I'm thinking the 25,000 is for the general election in November? Is that correct?
And the?
So that number would have to be increased next year by 47.5, up to 47.5, correct?
Well, this is interesting because, well, no, there's, there's two different accounts. There's Election Day, and then there's the primary account. So the 402 is for the primary, and then. So the 402 is for the primary and then the 401 is for election day.
So, Camille, Camille, is your question about the annual referendum in town? That we're not having that. So, but, but going forward, we may have that, right, for next year?
Well, I was thinking about the, well, so that $22,500 is just for the referendum and not the primary?
No, that, that line item 402, as I understand it, is for both referendum and primary. But this year, we have some savings because we're not doing a referendum. But going forward, presumably at this time next year, you know, we'll have restored meeting requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So we would have a referendum.
Anna, let me ask you this. The savings we have this year, because we're not having a referendum, does that go back to the town?
Yes, it would be part of, so what we don't spend this year will be part of our end of year operating results.
Okay. If next year, we could have both, we could have a referendum and a primary. So that's what, that's why we need the 25,000 for next year.
Right.
So the Board of Selectment did not, given that information, they did not adjust the registrar, they didn't make a recommendation for increasing the budget next year for that line item. So we have to make sure that we do that.
Yeah.
We have to make sure that we increase the registrar's budget next year to allow for moving the, the primary from what was it supposed to be held in March? And then it was postponed to June, but now it's in a different calendar year. It's going to, going to be in August. So we have to roll that, we have to add that money to next year's budget. So.
There's one other thing I, I, you know, I'll just bring to your attentions as we're talking about registrars. They, at the end of the day, I received an email saying that for the primary in August, they're going to be required to have the Plexiglas guards on all of their polling. So they need to buy like 25 of them. So that's $6,250.
So is that, is that something that the state is going to help us out with?
Well, um, that's a, that's a good question. There could be funding from the state, but at this point, we, we do not know. And then there's other issues that the registrars have been speaking about as well. The areas that we hold the primaries in are, need to be deep cleaned. They need to be sanitized throughout the day. They did indicate that there may be some assistance from the state on, on that. However, I'm not so, you know, I'm not so sure at this point on the, the Plexiglas petitions.
So here's what we, it looks like Mark Nickerson dropped off the call. Is that, is that true?
I don't, I don't see him on anymore.
Mark Nickerson dropped off the call. So Anna, will you talk to him tomorrow and make sure, this is really, you know, can he get with the registrars and figure out what their budget should be for next year? Because we, we don't know what the requirements are. We didn't know about the Plexiglas, but.
Oh, that just came today. I'm like, seriously?
Yeah, I bet, I'm sure. So he, he really needs to be prepared to tell us how this needs to change on Wednesday night as we go into deliberations, right? It's kind of like at the 11th hour that we're talking about this with no support. So, um, yeah, we need some answers for Wednesday. Okay. Other than that, I mean, the, the budget looks very flat from last year. So I don't know if anybody else has any questions for Anna to pass along to Mark and/or the registrars to get back to us? Yes, Anne Chikello?
I just have a quick question. Maybe somebody can help. Voter canvas, what does that entail? Just like, what is the purpose of that? And what is that, if anybody knows? Number 253 says voter canvas. Do you know by any chance?
Well, in the detailed write-up, the description says, "We are attempting to minimize the required expenses for conducting a canvas, but anticipate more voter confirmation letters in advance of the presidential election."
So what they have to do is they have to do mailings to so many voters to confirm that they're still, they should, they, that they should still be registered to vote in our town. So when they do the mailing, they include a self, like a self-stamped postcard, I believe. And you would just have to fill out the postcard and return it to them.
So is this for like people who they think may have moved or something like that?
You know what, to be honest with you, I'm not sure how they do the sampling. I'm not sure if it's random.
Okay.
I don't have an answer to that.
Okay, I was just wondering. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions that we need to follow up on?
Well, since we're in, in COVID land, I guess, you know, asking about absentee ballots and how that'll impact the budget as well. I mean, all these things, whether they're shields or space dividers, all this is going to come from the Secretary of State's office, all these directives.
If you remember when the town clerk did her presentation, she did discuss absentee ballots because the expectation is that it's going to increase substantially. And she indicated that the state is going to do some kind of a central mailbox. So when someone comes in to apply for the absentee ballot, they enter it in the system and then it's going to automatically get mailed out through this mailbox system.
It still may have, you know, I think it still may have some impact on this budget. So if we're asking questions, we might want to ask because, you know, there's still like chain of custody issues, you know, with, with these absentee ballots. Because the traditional way of, of having an absentee ballot requires that. So I don't know how the state's going to get around that. But just in this basic, I mean, this printing cost. So who is to assume those additional printing costs? Because if, and someone, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think a certain number of absentee ballots is expected to be printed typically. And now we're in a whole nother universe of requirement. So, yeah, that might be the case.
Okay, is everybody good for the registrars, Department 110 for now? Okay. We'll follow up with that on Wednesday then. The last department, it looks like tonight, is Department 724, which is the capital. So do you want to, yeah, do you want to just, should we just jump right into questions?
Well, I just had a procedural issue or whatever. I cannot find my little sheet with the capital budget on it. But I just, just refresh my recollection. It was in our budget book or did I have to copy that and it came by way of?
Oh, Anne, this isn't the CIP eight and a half by 14 sheet?
No, 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 I know. It's the capital separate sheet.
That should have been in your budget book.
Okay, so I, I'll locate it somewhere here. Okay. And it wasn't something that I copied. Okay, it just, I know, I, I know it's not this. This is the capital improvement plan. I know it's not that. But, um, and I have notes, but I just can't find that sheet at the moment. But I, I'll try to locate it.
You took it out of the book? Did you take it out of the book?
I know, I usually don't do that, but I probably tried to put it back to back with this and didn't have a paper clip. So it's ended up in who knows where, right?
In a pile somewhere, okay. Well, I.
Anna, I'll give you a copy.
Thank you, thank you neighbor Richard Steele.
You know what? I could take a picture of it and text it to you.
Okay.
And I don't know if that will help just for tonight's discussion. That's what we'll do.
Thanks.
Okay, it's on its way.
Thanks.
So I, I do have some questions on capital, but I'll let others go first if you have questions. Does anybody have any questions on the capital outlay? Yes, Anne Chikello?
Okay, so just kind of a basic question. Do you have the capital improvement plan and the capital outlay? Can you just explain the difference, just in general terms?
Okay, so the capital improvement plan, it, you know, we do, every year, we take a look at it and we reassess, you know, what we think the more important needs are. So every year at the annual town, we approve the post-budget year's capital improvement plan. When we discussed it on Saturday, the first thing that I referred you to was the last page to describe the funding sources. So the items that are in the 724 department are also noted in the capital improvement plan. So perhaps if we want, if we, if we go to that last page of the, of the capital improvement plan and we look at capital and non-reoccurring fund, what's in brown, $198,500. So if you take that, if you look at that number and you go to the very first line in the capital budget, it's called CNRE Municipal, which is the general fund subsidy to the capital and non-reoccurring fund. And then if you go to the spreadsheet that Anne Santoro just mentioned, you'll see the itemization of that $198,500. And therefore, so it's the funding for that piece of the capital improvement plan.
So that other table we're speaking of, it's in the big notebook?
Yes, it would be, it's, it's the spreadsheet that's at the back of the typical budget pages. So first, so it'd probably be the fourth piece of paper in your budget book. And that.
Okay.
We just put that together so that it makes it, I think, more.
Oh, I see now. Okay, I see. Then you're, you're showing how you got the 198,500 right there.
Correct, yeah.
Correct, okay, I'm following you now. Got it, all right, thank you.
And then in the notes column, this year, we added what the balance, what the current balance is for each of these items that we're subsidizing currently in the CNRE fund.
Read that again, Anna, in the note column, where?
On the spreadsheet.
You're saying you're identifying the total amount of, of what's in the fund currently?
Correct, yes.
So for example, how about give us one example?
So like the CAD software and survey equipment. So in, we're asking for $10,000. The current balance for the CAD software and survey equipment in the CNRE fund is $1,997.
Yeah, that's what I'm not seeing. I don't, I don't see that column. Does anybody else see that column?
Yeah, so.
Yes, it's all the way to the right.
Yeah, it says.
It's the fourth sheet in this department. The header is.
In the big notebook.
Line proposed 2020, 21 capital projects.
Got it, okay.
So Anna, does that mean then if it has a balance of, say, 2,000, just to round it up, that you'd only have to go out for 8,000 more then?
So what that means is if the 10,000 is funded, there'd be 12,000 in CNRE for that particular purpose.
Okay.
Okay, I, I did have a few questions. In the, in the detailed write-up for the CNRE Municipal, all of those numbers add up to $188,500. So there's an extra $10,000 on the CIP sheet that is missing. And I just didn't know what it was. Got 130, 130 for the revow, 10 for the roofs.
Where are you, Camille?
CAD isn't, the CAD software isn't itemized.
Okay. All right.
So wait, can I just ask one more question?
Sure, Anne.
So just going back to what I asked before, you said if the balance, say, on that CAD was 2,000 and they're requesting 10,000, then the balance in the CNRE would be 12,000, even if you, you only need 10,000 though? So I guess I'm a little confused, like.
So, okay, so, so the refund is a fund that we use to build up resources so that at some point in the future, we can go and purchase what we need.
Okay.
This is just, this is equipment that our engineers need when they, when they go out in the field. Yeah, I, so it's just building up the resource so that we can make purchases at some point in the future.
Okay.
For example, the, the next item, roofs, we're requesting 10,000. We have a balance of 38,000. So what we're looking to do is build up funds so that in the, you know, at some point when we need to do roof work, we'll have sufficient funds in order to be able to do that.
Are any, are any roof buildings scheduled to have their roof replaced this year or in the 2021 budget year?
I don't think so.
So items that we're trying to build a reserve for that we are not intending to spend money on in 2021 could actually be postponed an extra year if we're looking to save some dollars off of this year's budget.
I'll, I'll have a discussion with Mr. Bregga on that tomorrow.
Okay.
I thought, I thought Jeff Newton said something about a roof. But I guess this is just government come, it's different from the town.
I think Jeff was talking about leaks in the roof for the new elementary schools that they have money to cover, you know, I guess.
Oh, okay, all right, I just remembered I was talking about roofs, all right.
So is, and also if you could ask Joe, I mean, so $15,000 a year, every year for HVAC? How many HVAC units do we have?
Well, in all the buildings and you, and what you really have to look at is we have aging buildings.
But we've replaced a lot of HVAC units recently.
We still have, you know, constant ongoing issues with our HVACs. We still have, you know, constant ongoing issues with our HVACs.
So how many are to be replaced?
Camille, sometimes are these items, not the entire unit, but parts of the unit, like the pumps?
Yes, or, yes.
That was the case in the town hall, as I recall. It was, it was just one facet of the system that you needed to replace so that you could work your thermostats.
Right, and then one of next year's CIP, I, LoTIF items is actually to deal with a new system.
A happy thing, I did find my documents.
I do see the HVAC balance is pretty low, 6,400, so that's not going to get us too far if we have to do something.
Right.
But the roofs are a different story because I, I wasn't aware that any roofs on any of our buildings needed replacement in, you know, the next year. And there's, I don't know if $38,000 is enough to cover the roof of like, say, even the town hall, but.
Well, the town hall shouldn't need a new roof because we just did one a few years back.
That's what I, that's what I thought. So when the other buildings, I don't know, that might be something that we can look at. All right. And is there any? What, remind me, Anna, is there any cost in this capital plan that relates to the new police building, the PSB?
No, there isn't.
Okay, so none of the computers or the servers that are listed in this capital department 724 relate to the new police building?
So we do have, so the $5,000 for townwide service, those are typically the service that we have here in our IT department. And then the 15,000, that's typically to, like, our IT coordinator has a list of all of our equipment and has a plan on who's going to get the new computers that are purchased from one year to the next. We did increase that. Typically, we request $10,000. When we were going through the budget, it was felt that we may need a little bit more equipment in the, in the upcoming year. So I mean, if anything, I, I suppose I, you know, maybe 5,000 of that 15 could be, you know, something that, you know, to have a little bit of a buffer for the new public safety building. So the.
Okay.
The parks and rec acquisition program, that's, that's all equipment that we already purchased. This is making the ongoing payments. The turnout gear for Niantic Fire, that's for four sets. As was mentioned the other night, that's one of the Board of Selectmen proposed reductions to take, you know, to just get two instead of the four. And then there's the thermal imaging camera. Then when you get down to account 462, 7,366 of that is to make payments on the Flanders Fire Chief's vehicle. And then on Saturday, Chief Ricks discussed the SCBA cylinder replacement program that he's proposing. The assorted fire hose, again, four sets of turnout gear. The public, the police cruisers, so that's an annual payment on existing acquisition items. This is what's left in the, in the general fund for the annual payments. Any new equipment that we purchase, that is paid for out of CNRE by the fees that are charged for outside police jobs. And then there's the emergency management. Those are items that are under prior year acquisitions works. This includes prior year acquisition amounts as well as what's proposed in the capital improvement plan. If you go, if you go to the capital improvement plan on the last page, it's the funds in blue, the 495,000. That includes 365 for public works as well as 134 for police. Now, the two items for public works were replacing a sweeper and a dump truck for $90,000. In speaking with Mr. Regard, he did indicate that at the time that we put this together, the priorities were the sweeper and the dump truck. However, at this point in time, after speaking with the foreman at the highway garage, he's recommending that instead of replacing a dump truck, that we replace one of the pickups that we have. One of them, I guess the bottom is rusted out. So that would be a $60,000 cost to get the pickup and all the related equipment that they would get. Because I believe they would, I'm not sure if they, well, in any event. So I, I just thought I would throw that out, out there. So that's kind of going through all of the items that are make up the 748,089.
Anna, I just have a quick question. Under like town computer equipment, it says technology upgrade townwide computers. If you go over to the far right, it says just GF, which I'm, I'm assuming is general fund?
Yes, it does.
So what, what does that mean exactly? Can you just explain that to me?
Well, I was just, so like, I was just putting the notes to try to give some additional information to the board. So like, the 50,000 means it's a general fund expenditure. We're going to use, you know, in the general fund, we'll issue the purchase orders, make the purchase for those items as.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
So just making like little notes to maybe give the board a little bit more information.
Yeah, no, I'm following you now.
Anna, I have a question on, under public works, the bonds for improving the roads that we do every year?
Yes.
Did you include interest payments on that 950,000 in this year's budget, or would that go into the 21,2 budget?
So.
So would you bond that in August when you go out to bond, or would it be?
Well, I probably, would probably issue notes on that, do short-term notes. So the short-term notes would mature next year.
So we'd be paying interest on that, which is in, already in 522?
There would be no interest if, if we do, if we do notes for the road, there will be no interest in required to be paid next year because you do the short-term notes for a year and then they mature and you pay the interest at maturity.
Okay, but we're still, we're still obligated to pay interest, but you're saying 12 months after?
That's correct, that's correct.
So to answer my question, in Department 522, there's no interest in there related to this 950,000?
Correct.
Okay, that would be in 21, 22.
Yes.
So why, of all years, why is this year 950,000?
Okay, so when we put this together, it was before COVID happened. We have had some discussions and you know, Mr. Regard has looked at pairing that down to like a $500,000 level.
Anna, I, Anna, that was in, and Camille, was that, in our previous year, it was, I recall appropriating 950,000. So I think it's just sort of a, an idea to stay at that same level, but obviously he has other thoughts.
Yeah, I guess you're right. It was nine or 950 for a number of years and now it's starting to trail off. But it seems like this would be a year to maybe dip down a little bit more, right? And if necessary, we can add those costs back, maybe three, four years from now.
Camille, where, where are you at in the sheets for that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Rich. I'm, I'm back on the eight and a half by 14 page, the capital improvement plan. And I'm looking at 317 public works. $950,000 is in green, which means we would go out to bond that money next year. But Anna's saying the interest, my question was the interest on that bond, is that reflected in the 2021 budget? And she said, no, it wouldn't hit until 21, 22. Because I'm looking for savings this year. And I thought maybe that would be a way to get the interest down in Department 522, but.
I have a, I have a question also about, for my notes, the parks and rec vehicle that's described, let's see, in 421, the director's vehicle, $25,000, replacing a 2006 vehicle. So we actually had Parks and Rec Director here. It would have been good to ask him this question. But Anna, you may, you may know the status of the, the car and vehicle and what he's looking to, or what the town is looking to replace it with.
Sorry, Anne, where are you? I lost you.
Okay, so.
Are you with the long sheet still?
Actually, I mean, you could see it in a few places, but the, but if you look in your capital, not the cap, not the capital plan, but if you look in the capital outlays equipment budget of 724, and you go down the page and there's a description of the Parks and Rec vehicle. It's, it says 421 Town PNR Equipment. And in that, in those items that comprise $49,811, there's a director's vehicle in there. And I know there's theory funding for this, but I.
Right, so, so what that says is it's listing what the requested equipment for 2021 is. And it's also stating that, you know, we're recommending the use of funds currently available in CNRE Fund 32. They had also request, so in other words, the utility, the, the gator and the replacement of the director's vehicle would be using existing CNRE funds. So there is no money in the general fund for that. And in addition, they had asked for funds to replace an ATV. However, they're going to get, rather than purchasing a new one, they're going to take a hand-me-down from the police.
So we can remove that from Parks and Rec, the 15,000? No, wait. The ATV was how much?
So I believe it was a $10,000 item. It was a CIP, but we removed it because they're going to get one from the police. But we just wanted to mention that in the narrative.
Okay. Great, so it was removed already, okay.
But I guess back to the, back to the director's vehicle, and I realize that funding that already exists via CNRE, but you know, i- is it a situation where there's a dire need for this vehicle?
I believe, the fact that they're asking for 25,000, I, I believe they would be purchasing an escape same as we've been buying for the other departments.
So that would have to come before the Board of Finance for an appropriation anyway, when they get ready to buy it, correct, Anna?
Correct. Any, any use of, even though the funds are currently in the CNRE fund, they would not be able to be expended before going through the appropriations process, which would mean Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and typically a town meeting. However, if town meetings are still suspended, then there would be no town meeting. It would just be the Board of Selectmen and, and the Board of Finance, right?
Getting late, huh, huh, guys? We're losing steam a little bit. Any, so does anybody have any other questions on that Department 724? We sort of know what we're going to be producing from that department, as Anna mentioned, you know. Overall, there's only going to be four sets of turnout gear instead of eight, since the policeman offered that up this year with the gentle reminder that they would be doubling up next year. So that's something we can think about too. We really want to, you know, if next year is going to be just as equally dismal from an economic standpoint, is that, is that the path we want to take? Something to think about. Okay. So if there's no other questions, I think we can wrap up the discussion on the individual general government budgets. On Wednesday, we will begin deliberations. We have a few housekeeping items, minutes to be approved, a special appropriation is on that agenda. And then we'll begin deliberations where we begin to actually make decisions on the budget that we're going to pass. That evening, we will also take a little deeper dive into the revenue picture and maybe get some updated information from Anna. And we'll have to decide on whether there's any adjustments to the revenue side that we would like to make. We'll be deciding that. We'll decide on this CIP plan. Which again, is basically a long-range plan, except for what's in the 2021 column that's designated GF. That would actually be part of what's in our, incorporated into our big budget this year. So does anybody have any questions, comments, any board members at this time?
I just have a quick question. When we start deliberations, would we go over the Board of Education budget first or the town? Or is there a way that you do it?
Well, that, that largely is up to the chairman every year, so it's, it's different every year. What I think I would like to do, so what I would like to do, I think on Wednesday, our board comments are going to be moved before deliberations on the budget. So I would like each of the board members to spend just three to five minutes expressing their opinion about the budgets that have been submitted to us. Give us a big picture of where you stand on the budget. The big picture of what you think we should do. Should we pass it as is? Do we need to reduce more? If we need to reduce more, do you think it should come from Board of Ed or general government or capital? You know, just some high-level ideas of where you think that we should end up. And after each of us takes a turn and talks about the economy and our concerns about the taxpayers this year, then we'll go into more of a deep dive. And I'd like to start with the general. And I'd like to start with the general government side and go through department by department and say, okay, based on, if, if we come to consensus in, in our board comments about where we think we want to end up, then we can start going through each department and making motions for accepting it as presented or making changes to it. And after that, we can discuss capital and hopefully we'll come to some sort of consensus about what we think the actual capital number should be this year. And I would like to say Board of Education for last, because as you all are well aware by now, we do not have line item control over the Board of Education's budget. We can only tell them what the bottom line number is going to be. So of course, we're going to have opinions and thoughts about how we got to that bottom line, which you may or may not want to share. It's fine. It's up to you. But we do have to just make a recommendation on, on one number for the Board of Ed budget. So that'll be the three pieces. And then we will make a motion to approve this capital plan. So there's really four big, you know, four big pieces that we'll have to make decisions on on Wednesday. If we don't get to everything, if we don't finish on Wednesday evening, we may have to go into Thursday. So I don't know who's available on Thursday. I don't know if, how long you want to go on Wednesday. Sometimes it can be very quick. Sometimes it could be hours on end, just like tonight's meeting. Here it is almost 11:30. We've been going up this for almost five hours. There's just no telling because it, it depends on how much of like minds we have. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So, um, Camille, I just wanted to mention, and for the board, the, um, the Board of Education met today at 5 o'clock. And I did zoom in to that meeting and Jeff will be sending us, and I guess it will come to you, Camille, his two slides that he produced showing reductions through this fiscal year and then, you know, his savings and then expenses at the same time. So he has a net number there and then other things perhaps looming on the horizon. And then he did address, which I was really happy about, because I actually sent him an email. I had read where, and we began this conversation the other night and I won't get into the weeds on it, but under the CARES Act, I was trying to make the point that, you know, there are resources and we should try to pursue those. And so I did go back and look at notes and this and that and articles I had saved. And there was one that actually pinpointed the number from a, from part of the CARES Act, which is 170, 171,000. That's already come to the state, Connecticut State Department of Education and earmarked for East Line. So we know that number. So that, at today's meeting, Mariana said it would come in the fall to them that she's aware of. But it is a definitive number by way of Congress, then the United States Department of Education, Connecticut, State of Connecticut, right to the district. So that's a known quantity. And then the second pot that is possible is the governor's education relief fund. But there's, I remember, I think there's about $10 million in there, maybe 11, which can be distributed to, directly to school districts. But those, but that's based on governor's discretion and the particulars of that are not clear. We have that general amount that we know, but we don't know how it's going to be distributed. So I'm really happy that that was addressed today because I, I felt like it was looming out there that we were, you know, not really getting a handle on what CARES Act money might be available. So, you know, that was a good thing. So I guess those documents will also come to us. Maybe tomorrow. Come to you, Camille.
Yeah, I, thanks for, thanks for mentioning that, Anne, because I didn't have any idea about the 171,000 earmarked for September. So that's good to know.
Yeah, so that number, Mariana gave a 170, 170,980. My own resource was 171,922, but her numbers, you know, might be more updated, but let's just say.
Yeah.
Close, $171,000. So, and I mean, it, it's not gargantuan, but it's certainly a positive, you know?
Yeah, definitely.
And I think their net savings was $263,000. I don't have the, um, the slides, but the Board of Ed's net savings, considering all the expenses, and they actually enumerated all of them, all their, all their, you know, expenses of late, et cetera, et cetera, 263,000. But you'll get that tomorrow.
Okay, because I, I did not see any emails from Board of Ed tonight, but when I do receive it, I will pass it along. Thank you, Anne. Any other comments from the board members? Any questions about Wednesday? Okay. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So.
Aunt Chikalo, thank you. Is there a second? Thanks, John. All those in favor say aye. Great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Anna. Thank you for hanging in there all night. It's really appreciated.
Okay.
And we'll see you Wednesday.
Thank Karen too.
Yeah.
Good night, Karen.
How could we forget Karen? She's a black screen, but that's why.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Karen. Good night.